Okay, good evening, everyone. I will call the August 27th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. I do notice, and has been pointed out to me by several of my fellow council members, we have a group of scouts in the back of the room. And anybody that better know the Pledge of Allegiance as well as anybody else is this group of scouts. So I would ask every scout that's back there to come up here, please. And we were going to warn you, but then again, as was pointed out to me, your motto is something like be prepared, or whatever, right? So, come on up, young men. How are you? Hi, I'm Greg. What's your name? Brody? Ewan? Isaac. Nice to meet you fellows. Could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming in. What brings you in here? Some sort of assignment you had to complete? What is, for what?
For communication.
There you go. Outstanding. Well, welcome. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate your help. When Pandell Savick passed away on June the 12th of this year, his great friend Jack Nicholas was quoted as saying, "Pandell was as good a friend as I have ever had." We do have two of his good friends, Nicholas and Mike McKee. Could you guys come on up in the audience tonight? I had a, well, I'm going to read this to you first. We have a proclamation to present. Was following the 43rd plane of the Memorial Tournament, which he helped found, Pandell Savick passed away, June 12th, 2018. And whereas Pandell's life was a life well-lived, full of adventure, beginning at the age of nine, when he sailed to the United States from Dragoes, Macedonia, all by himself to join his father in Youngstown, following the passing of his mother and grandmother. And whereas he quickly learned the English language and demonstrated an athletic prowess, excelled in football, basketball, and baseball at Gerard High School. And whereas his talent on the gridiron did not go unnoticed, and he soon earned a football scholarship to play at Ohio State for Coach Wes Fessler. And whereas before he could prove his talent on the field, he enlisted in the Marines and served in the South Pacific Theater during World War II, narrowly escaping death in the battles of, oh, boy, somebody help me out. Palau? Okinawa? Thank you, Nicholas. Whereas upon his return to Columbus, he enrolled at the Ohio State University for three years and was quarterback for the Buckeyes. It was in his role, in this role, that he led the team to the Big Ten Championship and earned Ohio State's first-ever win in the Rose Bowl on January 2nd, 1950. And whereas he turned down an opportunity to play professional football with the Green Bay Packers to pursue a successful career in business with the Twymon Templeton, which later became Twymon Safety. And whereas his continued good fortune landed him as a neighbor to the rising PGA Tour golfer Jack Nicholas, resulting in a lifelong friendship. And whereas Pandell, along with Jack Nicholas, Robert Hoag, and Ivory Young, would become the founders of the Memorial Tournament, with Pandell serving as its inaugural chairman and eventually becoming its general chairman, Amoratis. And whereas Pandell and his beloved wife Janice, who passed away in 1991, raised three children, Sally, Stephanie, and David, who loved him deeply and will miss him dearly. And whereas a wonderful run at life, the stories of Pandell Savick was a book that told his life history and continues to give back to the community, with proceeds benefiting the Alzheimer Association. Now, therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, on behalf of City Council, do hereby offer our sincere condolences to Pandell's children and grandchildren and thank his family for sharing this wonderful man who contributed greatly to the lives of all that he touched. Signed this 27th day of August, 2018. Now, come on up. You know, I had an opportunity to meet him. And Nicholas, I think you brought me up there, too. It was his house, wasn't it? And he had the book signing when it came out.
Ambassador from Macedonia?
The ambassador from Macedonia was here.
Counsel General in Detroit.
And they were like in awe of him, as they should have been. He was, he was. And he was such a charming, down-to-earth guy. And I'm sitting at the kitchen table, just talking to him, and he's, you know, he's just telling stories like it was just something that happened in his backyard. And it was truly amazing. Do you want to comment, Nicholas? I mean, I know you knew him for many, many years and...
Yeah, thank you all very much. This means a lot to all of us. Mike and I worked for him for 20 years. So it was a dreadful day when we found out he passed away. I was with him the day before. He had fallen and broke his leg. He was going in for surgery. Surgery was successful, but there was a blood clot and, you know, the rest of the story. He was a good man, strong man. He loved the community so much. As you know, without the club, the place really was put on the map from what he and Jack and the other founders did. So we all owe him a debt of gratitude. He went down to meet Governor Rhodes, who became his golfing buddy at Sciota, and he said, "I need your help with our tournament." And Governor Rhodes said, "Whatever you need, whatever you need." So they had caissons of water brought out in the early days, and the state police worked with the local police. So Governor Rhodes gave him carte blanche for whatever he needed to make the thing successful. The funny part about the Rose Bowl is that his proudest moment was when he was done, he got to kiss Elizabeth Taylor. So he never forgot that. But Pandell was a driving force around all of us. He was so good to us, and he's deeply missed. But he's around. You pull on the front gate, you could feel that he's around somewhere. So we know he's in a safe place.
Well, and Nicholas, you do so much for this community and with the club.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
You know, I know you served as the president of the Chamber, and you're constantly giving back. And I know that every time that the gates to that club swing open...
That's right.
...you're welcoming this community, and we greatly appreciate what you personally do and what you do.
Pandell always told us to treat everybody like family, and it would all work out.
You know, at the end of the day, no matter what it is, it all comes down to relationships.
That's right.
You know, that's really, that's really what it boils down to. Mike, is there anything you want to add? You sure? Okay. All right. Thank you very much Nicholas for coming in.
Thank you all very much.
Pandell, he was quite a golfer as well.
He was. Another story, Jack was trying to get him an exemption into the Australian Open. And so Kerry Packer, who was one of our members who just passed away a couple of years ago, he was a media mogul in Australia. You may have seen his son was engaged to Mariah Carey recently. And anyhow, so Kerry Packer went to the Australian PGA, and Pandell received a special exemption to play in the Australian Open. The headline Thursday morning in the paper, "Mystery Man Steals Limelight From Golden Bear," because Pandell actually played that well in Australia. Yes.
Mission accomplished.
Mission accomplished. He was famous worldwide.
Fantastic.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot Nicholas.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So now, we're going to have an update on the Bridge Park community events. Ted, any, you got, want to bring anybody up and give us, give us the update?
Yeah, we do have a slide show.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, great to see you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you, council members, for having us today. We, as Bridge Park matures, we really wanted to take a moment to talk through some of the great events that we've had. Some of them we've brought before you, prior to them happening. And now that we've sort of gone through and kicked the tires on throwing some events there, we wanted to give you a few updates. So as we've worked with Scott Dring and the Downtown Strategic Alliance, we've started to bucket different events. And we sort of look at them as tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three events. Tier-one being larger events, tier-two being a little bit smaller, then tier-three. And on this next slide here, we're going to talk a little bit about some tier-three events that have happened here in the downtown Dublin area. And some things, some of the things that we're most excited about with these events are, a few of them traditionally have happened outside of Dublin. We were really excited when the Columbus Underground Group brought a couple of their events here to the Exchange, along with the Columbus Symphony Orchestra Gala happening here at the Exchange. And then more recently, again, this is more of a traditional City of Dublin event, but we've had the Chamber, they had a great brew hop, because we like to serve brews in and around Bridge Park. But they had a great event. They brought some vibrancy and excitement. And then one of the things that the, that the CVB has been working on, Scott Dring and his team, is bringing the Honda R&amp;D Holiday Event here coming up in November. It's an example of an event that they've been interested in hosting here and around Dublin. And now, along with the great adjacency of downtown historic Dublin and Bridge Park, on November 10th, they're going to bring a great group, about 1,500 folks here. And it'll be sort of our first event where we've worked with an outside group to try to shut down a street. And we're going to sort of work through the details of that, so that's another fun one that I wanted to update you on. Of course, you know, as we just heard about the Memorial Tournament, which has been such a great staple here in the Dublin community, we brought some, some really great, along with a really great partnership, we brought some really fun and innovative things to Bridge Park. This graphic is something that I think we all should be proud of. It was, there were a lot of, a lot of great conversations in and around this. It really honored the Memorial Tournament and, and of course, that hotel there was quite, quite popular during, during the week. And all that really culminated, if you want to flip to the next slide, for us in our partnership, on Thursday, May 31st, we had ForFest. I think we, we came before you, prior to the event, and, and requested to have the street shut down, and it was a very successful event. Of course, it's a great example. We worked so closely with Alison Leroy and her team. They're pretty darn good at planning events here in the city. And Sue Bernas and her team were instrumental in as we planned through this, and so many of the other downtown constituents. So we, we had the streets safely shut down. We worked closely with Sergeant Hosterman and the rest of the Dublin Police Department and worked through, because of course, any event, we really want to make sure that we're, that we are safe and secure. So as the streets were closed, we had great live entertainment. It was a very family-friendly environment. And we had, we estimate a little over 5,000 people. And year one out of the gate, we're really happy with that. We intentionally, for lack of a better term, somewhat slow-played it. We wanted to make sure we could be safe and sound. And so we're really excited as we start planning for next year. I wanted to play a quick video, if I could, real quick. We think that same shot, when the bridge is a little more complete come this year, will be, will be even better. But again, just a great atmosphere and such a great example of how we're able to partner with, with so many folks in and around the city. And again, a great pride point for us. On the next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about the Dublin market. And I don't know whether to thank Michelle Crandall or blame her, but in April of 2017, she sent an email to Matt Starr, who's with us today, and Matt quickly got me engaged. Once upon a time, there was a market here in Dublin on 161 in a couple of different areas. And with the, all the traffic and congestion and construction that was happening, it was, they decided to sort of take a year off. And as the streets were coming alive in Bridge Park, Michelle said, "Hey, why don't you guys think about having a farmers' market?" And we had really been planning on doing some street fairs. And so, again, with some great planning, along with a lot of great partners here in this city, we took a survey and we learned that the, the community really wanted to see a Saturday morning market. So we all worked very hard together, again, Alison Leroy, Sue Bernas, our team, to really bring that to light. Originally, we started off not knowing whether we'd have 20 vendors or, or 100 vendors, but we ended up with 160 vendors that showed interest initially. And that list continued to grow. We had to actually shut the forum down online because our market had filled, and we'd only had enough room for about 45 vendors. But we've had, on and off with seasonal and non-seasonal, about 66 vendors throughout the course of the season. And it really is a great community event. It's, it's something that we really take pride in for a lot of reasons, not just by the community that attends the event and buys and shops, but even the community vendors that are there. You provide this great platform for people to sell their wares, and it's just been a fantastic event. We have music and entertainment. And we, and we're averaging about 2,000 weekly attendees. Knock on wood, the weather has been overall pretty darn good to us. We see Mr. McDaniel there quite often, which is, which is great. But again, another really great event. And I think just a great example of how we can all really work together and bring something fun to the community. We've got another quick video on this that I'd like to show, too, if you don't mind. So we, of course, look forward to continuing events like this. And I think you'll, you'll see us with partners continue to, to grow more and more events at Bridge Park. This last slide here is just really representative of the community itself. If you have a moment to ever check any of the social media channels, either the day of or even after these events, you'll see that the public is heavily engaged with what we've done. And, and we're all really, something we can all, I think, be really proud of that we're bringing to Dublin, so.
You know what surprised me, I was there last Saturday, was it was a really, really big family event. A lot of small children, babies, families, really just enjoying the day, and all the vendors, and it was wonderful.
Yeah, it's a great feeling. It's also real dog-friendly. Lots of dogs, yeah.
So Ted, what's your feelings about this? I mean, are you guys, you have parking, which is fantastic. And today, I was talking to Mrs. Shepherd from, used to put on the, they used to put on the Arts Fair. And of course, that went away, and I know Dublin Arts Council always supported them. So they were talking about maybe having the Arts Fair, like the one that's downtown in Columbus on the riverfront, and moving it into your area. But I didn't know how you guys felt about that. You know, we want to have one of these a month, none of these a month, one every two months, you know?
We're definitely, we're definitely still trying to feel that out. We believe that long-term, if you think of those tier-one events, which are maybe like a ForFest, it brings thousands of people, that, you know, three to four of those a year and then around the downtown Dublin area, we think makes sense. Obviously, as the pedestrian bridge comes online, that opens up some fun things with the Strategic Alliance Group, where we could maybe move some of these events to both sides of the river. So we remain wildly open-minded at this point, where we listen and consider all, all events. But at the same time, we, we feel like we've, we're also cautious at times, because we want to make sure that it works well for the community as a whole. But yeah, we're, we're approached often, and we always keep our ears open. We know that street fairs work. People seem to really enjoy it. Even at ForFest, sort of an anecdotal piece of information, we had just a few small vendors there, and people really engaged with those vendors that were even at ForFest. So we know that works.
Is there, is there anything in, as you've experienced these, these events, in our design of the green spaces, the open spaces that are still yet to be really worked on? Anything that you think that you'd like to see improved on? Anything that would make event happenings better, easier?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'd say, you know, this isn't necessarily green spaces. This is specific to the streets. We're starting to find ways, especially as we design further blocks of the development, where we can more efficiently and safely shut the streets down to allow pedestrian activity within those streets. As far as the green spaces are concerned, we sort of affectionately call them our pocket parks between the buildings. We activate those through our music and entertainment, and it seems to work really well. A lot of families, you know, they buy, they buy something at the market, and they'll sit in one of those spaces and enjoy it. So I, I think right now, it's, it's working.
Pass on your, any of your ideas as we go forward, because it would be...
Yeah, we will. Thank you. Yeah, we'll put some time into that.
You have anything planned for Christmas or winter, or is it too early? Talk about that.
Um, no, it's never too early to talk about.
I got a giggle. Something's up.
It's never too early to talk. It's too early to commit to it, no. We actually, just last week, we started, and again, another great partnership, Alison Leroy said, "Hey, have you guys thought about a Thanksgiving market?" Our final market is September 29th this year. So we're starting to look into the idea of maybe bringing back a market the week prior to Thanksgiving, the Saturday prior to Thanksgiving. And then we're also looking at potentially doing a, for lack of a better term, sort of a holiday fest, which would be similar to a farmer's market, but more in the evening. And both of those would just be single-day events. And we're just starting the planning. We hope it's possible. If not this year, we'll make it possible next year. Yeah? We love the idea.
Fantastic. Any other questions from council? Thank you very much, Ted.
Thank you all so much.
We really appreciate all of your efforts over there. Looking forward to the future. Thanks. David Yeo, where are you, David? David is going to give us an update from the Dublin Arts Council. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, members of council, for your continued support and providing me the opportunity to present a brief update on Dublin Arts Council. When I spoke with you in the spring about eight key trends in the arts and how Dublin is responding, I mentioned that the Dublin Arts Council Gallery had been nominated Best Suburban Arts Gallery by the readers of City Scene Magazine. I am happy to report that we are awarded the recognition for a second year in a row. To that end, I would like to invite all of you to the current exhibition in the Best Suburban Arts Gallery in central Ohio. The name of the gallery, or the name of the exhibition is Short North Long North, which is a group exhibition of varied artworks by represented artists from three short north galleries on view through September 14th. So substantial critical review, which is at all of your seats, was given in the Columbus Dispatch yesterday. So Dublin Arts Council staff continues to represent our community on a national and international platform. I have been invited to attend the Americans for the Arts Annual Executive Leadership Forum, a convening of 16 top-level arts executives from across the United States in Sundance, Utah. While at Sundance, my fellow executives and I will brainstorm, reflect, and strategize on the future of the arts, preparing our respective organizations to benefit locally from national trends in the arts world. A wide range of topics include equity, community development, and long-term visioning will be explored. Dublin Arts Council Director of Engagement Janet Cooper and I have also been invited to present at the 2018 Social Theory, Politics, and the Arts Conference in Manchester, England. The conference brings together policymakers, practitioners, artists, and students to explore key trends and policy issues concerning the arts around the world. The conference is the oldest and one of the most influential gatherings in the field of cultural policy. The 2018 conference will focus on cultural democracy, critically exploring social participation, representation, and change through arts and creativity. Our presentation of Voice for All Using Technology in Socially-Focused Arts Practice provides a case study in Dublin Arts Council's use of innovative technology. While they're a member of the Dublin, while there, a member of the Dublin Friendship Association, Jen and I will visit our friendship city of Dublin, Ireland, to meet arts leaders to explore our deepening relationship through potential arts and cultural collaborations. Now, an invitation again to you. Dublin Arts Council will host a free open house in the Historic Dublin Arts Center at 7125 Riverside Drive on Monday, September 10th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event features guided and self-guided tours, an interactive photo collage project, storytelling activities, and a community-curated exhibition of memorabilia. The open house is being held as part of Ohio History Connections' Ohio Open Doors Project, a statewide initiative. Thanks to the foresight of City Council, the city purchased the riverfront property, as Mike Keenan and John Reiner know, substantially renovating the facility to house the Dublin Arts Council and accommodate our abundance of programming. On the National Historic, on the National Register of Historic Places, the stunning French eclectic-style estate was built in 1941 by Charles and Sarah Crum. The home, sited on more than four acres of sloping riverfront grounds, is perhaps best known as the Jelpe Home, the founders of Swan Cleaners, who lived on the estate from 1947 to 1985. Eleanor Jelpe entertained numerous political dignitaries and celebrities in their home over the years. We extend our thanks to Dana McDaniel, Michelle Crandall, and city staff for assisting us in the creation of a, a fully-produced legacy tour hosted by historian Jim Richards, whose father was the caretaker of the property, Paul Jelpe, who grew up in the home, and Dave Amrose, who was Eleanor Jelpe's nephew. The Legacy Tour will debut online during the September 10th opening. Dublin Arts Council is also honored to have recently contracted internationally-recognized public artist and public arts administration, public arts administrator Helen Lessick from Los Angeles to help us create a public art master plan with the City of Dublin. This important document will formalize our award-winning program and will create a strategic roadmap for innovation, sustainability, and growth. Helen's consultancy began last week with initial visit to Dublin and will continue over an eight-month period. We are working closely with Dana and city staff to structure a full engagement plan so that council and the Dublin community can be fully involved. In closing, I want to remind you that we're now just 48 days away from the Bread Festival, which will take place in Kaufman Park on Sunday, October 14th, from 12:00 to 9:00. The City of Dublin's support allows us to leverage additional funds to present this free celebration of the many cultures that call our community home. Thanks to your initial investment, Dublin Arts Council has received a competitive grant of $10,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts, and has just received notification of an additional grant of $10,000 from the Cardinal Health Foundation. I thank you for your leadership and extend additional gratitude to the National Endowment and our champion business leader, Cardinal Health. Our volunteer portal is open, is live and open on dublinarts.org, so I encourage you to go to the portal. The Bread Festival would not be possible without the continued efforts of our diverse planning committee, which includes many city staff who have put in a lot of hours, including Michelle Crandall, Nancy Richardson, Sarah McQuade, Alison Leroy, Lori Gishel, Vince Venacelli and his team, Christine Nardekia, Deviani Prionik, and many others. And I must thank Dana McDaniel, who supplied the impetus for developing the festival. We also deeply appreciate the many community volunteers who give of their time to bring this celebration to life, and council member John Reiner, whose vision and encouragement has helped spur the event's incredible success and growth. I hope you will join us on October 14th. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, David, and congratulations on your second consecutive Best Suburban Arts Gallery.
Thank you.
So three events, let's just go back over the Monday, September 10th, open house.
That's right.
4:00 to 8:00, open to the public, and it's free.
Exactly.
Then the Bread Festival on October 14th, Kaufman Park, and I believe that's free.
12:00 to 9:00, yes.
12:00 to 9:00, that's free. And then if somebody wanted to come visit the Short North Long North between now and September the 14th, remind us what the hours are where they could...
So our hours are Tuesdays from 10:00 to 7:00, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 10:00 to 5:00, and Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00.
Okay.
So I encourage you to come out. It's a beautiful exhibition. It's been very well received.
It's a great show.
The depth in, in, that you bring to our community just can't be emphasized enough.
Well, thank you.
I mean, this, this magazine is finally discovering what we've known all along, that you're the best suburban.
Thank you. Well, thanks for all you do to keep the arts alive in Dublin. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything from council?
Just thanks for your leadership. You and Janet and the rest of the staff do a fantastic job up there.
Thanks, John.
You bring a lot of honor to our city.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, David.
Yep.
I really appreciate you coming in.
David, do you think they'll recognize the field of corn there when you're in London?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the point, right? Okay. We did have a sign-up sheet out front for citizen comments on items that are not on the agenda, and it is completely blank. If there is, oh, I got a hand in the back. Come on up, ma'am. Just give us your name and address, and you can, you have five minutes to talk about whatever you want to talk about. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Teresa Kray, and I live at 8267 Trails End Drive in Dublin. And I own the Dublin Dance Center. And I've owned the Dublin Dance Center for 35 years. And I realized that tonight, you guys are going to speak about Resolution 4018. And I wanted to be on record saying that I'm very interested in commenting or having some, some part to do with it. As I said, 35 years owning Dublin Dance Center, we have 1,200 families. Two-thirds of them are actual Dublin residents. We teach 2,500 children a week, all, any type of dance art form. We have the Dublin Dance Foundation as a 501(c)(3) that is really run by Dublin parents. So my comment and what I'm thinking about here is, the reason I'm so passionate about this resolution, we produce 14 shows a year. Seven of those shows we produce at the Upper Arlington High School, because it's huge. And each one of those shows, 1,000, at least 1,000 people attend these shows. When we use the Abbey Theater, the other, we use the Abbey Theater 11, 12 shows a year. So we are there seven times, but we have to repeat because it seats just 240. We make it 240. We add 40 seats. So my comment and what I'm thinking about here is, the reason I'm so passionate about this resolution, we produce fourteen shows a year. Seven of those shows we produce at the Upper Arlington High School because it's huge. And each one of those shows, 1,000, at least 1,000 people attend these shows. When we use the Abbey Theater, the other, we use the Abbey Theater 11, 12 shows a year. So we are there seven times, but we have to repeat because it seats just 240. We make it 240. We add 40 seats because it really only seats 187. So we add seats because our shows have so many people. And they're, for the most part, Dublin residences, residents. So these shows, we'll have seven, eight, 900 people that come to these shows. So I think, we have a vested interest in this performing arts center. I think it's hugely important to the city. Because of the Dublin Dance Foundation, I'm absolutely positive how many young families are totally interested in being involved and would support this type of thing. So I'm not a polished person, I'm not a part of the OU, I'm not a part of the council, but I know a thing or two about the Dublin families. And I work with them all day, every day for thirty-five years. So I'm just hoping that I would get an opportunity to comment on this resolution and/or maybe be a part of the study or the impact. So that is, I don't need any more time than that. That was just what I wanted to make sure that.
But your light is still green. It goes green, and then it goes yellow, and then it goes red. We absolutely want people exactly like you to participate in that conversation. So we've got your name and address.
Okay.
You're going to be involved, we'll ask for your opinion, and we will listen to your opinion throughout the entire process.
That would be great. That is my hope, and that's why I came this evening. I am very hopeful. I think it's hugely important. I hope OU and I hope that it's all hugely successful. It's very needed, and I think would be supported.
I have reason to believe, not to get ahead of us on the agenda, I have reason to believe that that legislation might be postponed for a couple of weeks to the next council meeting.
Oh, so maybe not.
It'll be, it'll be online. I think it'll be the next council meeting, but until this body kind of decides, I won't know for sure. But I have some inside information, I guess. I think it's going to be in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
So keep your eye on the agenda that's published, online and in the paper, and you are more than welcome to come in. And just like you've got five minutes now, when it's on a piece of legislation, it's on the agenda, you get to talk again for up to five minutes about that. So please keep your eye on it, because your, your input is exactly what we need.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in.
We can probably collect your email address and things and make sure that we get you an email. Donna, can you get with her, make sure that we send an email when it's, in case you aren't able to see the agenda online, we'll reach out to you and let you know when it is.
Okay, that would be great.
Absolutely. We can do that. Thank you for coming in. Does anybody else wish to comment on anything not on the agenda? Seeing no additional hands, we will move along. Other than consent agenda, does any member request that the three items that are on the consent agenda be removed for any reason? Hearing no such request, I make a motion that we approve those three consent agenda items. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Under the Correspondence Section, Notice of Legislative Authority, has to do with liquor license, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Peterson. The city recently received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control regarding a transfer application for a D5 and D6 permit from JMJR Enterprises, doing business as Corporate Caters, to Axe Throwing LLC. The address designated for the premises is 6665 Dublin Centre Drive in the Dublin Village Centre. This is the same location as Corporate Caters, so the current holder of the permit appears to be transferring that to the new occupant, which will be Axe Throwing. While the Division of Liquor Control maintains the ultimate decision-making authority as to whether the transfer of the liquor permits will happen, the city can request a hearing regarding the advisability of the transfer. Staff would recommend that council request such a hearing in this matter. Although Axe Throwing does not have a history of liquor law violations, combining recreational drinking and throw, Axe Throwing presents safety concerns. And we believe the city should request the hearing in order to hear more about the safety measures that they plan to put in place at the premises. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? I make a motion that we request a hearing for, is it from the Liquor Department that would hold the hearing?
Yes.
We request a hearing to discuss the recreational drinking along with Axe Throwing. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And for clarification, I have done this before. It's really, we're looking for the security, right? How this is set up, is that what you're really looking at?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, because you go into a cage to throw these axes.
Okay.
Ow, that makes sense.
There's one over on, fifty-dollar Avenue, they're coming up everywhere.
There are, yeah, there are two others in Columbus.
Yeah, I've done this, this is okay, if it's safe.
You've done this.
Yeah.
Okay, and the tabled postponed items portion of the agenda, Resolution 40-18, Anne?
Authorizing the city manager into a cooperative agreement with Ohio University to share the cost of a professional services agreement for services related to the exploration of a cultural and performing arts center.
I'm going to make a motion that we postpone this legislation until the next city council meeting, which I think is September 9th, 10th, I'm sorry. We postpone this till September the 10th.
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Resolution 45-18, Anne?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Churchman Road Streetscapes Planting Project.
Matthew?
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up from the last council meeting. In your packet this evening, there is a memo which answers and/or clarifies some of the questions that were brought up regarding the streetscape plan for the Churchman Road project. Just to refresh your memory, this is the project that will be along the entire length of Churchman Road, as well as the southern end roundabout where it intersects with Rings Road. Without going into specific details of the memo itself, from what I recall, the tree lawn width was a question. That width was well within the parameters and consistent with our standards with the city, if not in excess of those standards. The placement of those trees to be on the east side of the shared juice path, that is certainly an option, however, that is city of Dublin-owned but maintained by HOA, so there would be some potential conflicts there. There's also some landscaping that already exists on that side of the pass, so staff is recommending to remain as they're noted on the plan. The specifications regarding the soil and/or the sources of the trees to make sure that the maturity of those trees was adequate and appropriate, and the tree root growth was adequate and appropriate to not heave sidewalks, those guidelines are also specified in the contracted or the bid specifications as well. So I, at this point, staff feels as though those issues have been addressed, and we are recommending approval for Resolution 4518, which is to accept the bid from Builderscape, which came in $138,000, which is well below the budget for the project. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Questions from council?
Thank you, I appreciate you doing that. We just was not able to scale it off the drawings that were provided, so thank you for answering those questions.
Always good to check first, right?
Is that it, Chris?
That's it.
Okay, Anne?
I'm Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thanks, Matt. Second reading public hearing on ordinances, ordinance 46-18.
I'm mending the city of Dublin community plan to add a special area plan, the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, for the Legacy Office area, including the Metro Blazer and Emerald Districts, covering approximately 987 acres bordered by Westford Street to the north, Emerald Parkway to the west, France Road to the east, and Tull Crossing Boulevard to the south.
Deviana?
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Good evening, members of council. For second, second reading of Dublin Corporate Area Plan tonight, I have a very brief presentation following our first meeting. I'm just highlighting different elements that we have incorporated in the plan as part of our discussion from last meeting. Elements addressed in the plan, in revised plan, include architectural diversity. It has always been intent of the plan, but it's clarified in Development and Design Guidelines section. Natural building materials, the plan encourages use of natural building materials, but prescriptive language in terms of specific applicability of these materials. That language has been modified to allow more creativity and flexibility. Open space integration element has always been the intent of the plan and has been reflected throughout the plan, but now it's goal of, of the plan. So integration of more usable feature-like open space for any development or new development is, is, is the goal of the plan. Applying place-making principles as we see changes in the plan is another recommendation that we have incorporated to allow opportunities for community to interact. Dedicated alternative transportation lanes, that point was discussed at Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Since then, we have followed with our Public Works Department and included a recommendation to do a feasibility study to see if it's possible along France Road. And area rezoning, we, we as a staff would definitely look at different options and approaches to achieve same goal of setting this area for success and bring it back to council as we move on to implementation phase as options for council to consider. With that, staff recommends approval of ordinance 4618. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Deviana, we had an agenda, or list out that people signed up for items that are on the agenda. No one signed up, but I believe there might be some residents who are here. Is anybody here that's interested in this legislation, would you like to make a comment? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Clay Danny, 5775 Settlers Place, Dublin, Ohio. I will make this quick, I'm just here in representation of the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association. Just wanted to reiterate a couple of points, and points specifically to some items that were probably in the packet given to council some time ago. Just wanted to refer back to a letter that was sent by Mark Stack, who is the Llewellyn Farms Civic Association President, outlining some of the concerns that the residents have with relation to the Dublin Corporate Area Plan. I'll just summarize a few pieces of that. First of all, we want to thank staff, the council, everybody that's been involved over the past year on feedback and being open to, to hearing our concerns. We certainly appreciate that. In summary, the residents of Llewellyn Farms are trying to ensure that the development of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan includes tangible plans and specific language reflecting the concerns that the residents have, most namely two undeveloped sites in the packet at Sites 10 and 11, and also future potential redevelopment of areas within the plan that could have adverse impacts and consequences on residents living in the area. Really, the residents are excited about many aspects of the Dublin Corporate Area Plan, so long as the neighborhood's character and integrity is not jeopardized throughout the process. The neighborhood's residential character is currently in jeopardy, given the fact that there is going to be rezoning that's going to happen to the areas around here. We're confident that none of the rezoning that will take place will have an adverse impact on the, the residents that live in the lots adjacent to these, to these parcels. But we, we can't be sure, so we just appreciate all of the attention and care that you all will take in the process, and the Planning and Zoning Committee will take in the process as well. The big concerns are use allowances, that they are consistent in not, not causing an adverse impact to residents along the, around the area, integrating parks and open space, building height, building setbacks, lighting and windows, hours of operation, parking lot lighting, landscaping, buffering and fencing, environmental protections for the streams and creeks going through the area, materials and building design, as well as trash collection. We fully recognize and realize that most of this will be clarified in the planning and zoning process, but just wanted to make sure that you all were once again aware of the concerns that we have, and we thank you again for being cognizant of that.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming in. Jane, it's your neck of the woods, you want to?
I just want to, Mr. Danny, are you pretty comfortable with, on 10 and 11, are you pretty comfortable with some of the readings, some of the protections that we're, that we're identifying about, like when you say you worry about the, the parking and the lighting, that's really on 10 and 11 is where you're, I want to be specific that that's what you're really thinking about.
That's correct. The overarching concern is that if you're in the, in the backyard in the evening and you're looking into the lot beyond you, that you don't have large LED lights that are shining into your back patio window, and same with lighting and, and the building height and density, those things, that's the main concern, is just making sure that, you know, the, the future isn't terribly worse than the present day because of all of this, so.
Okay, thanks.
You know, it's interesting, over the years, I think they've refined this out because in the last thirty years, people have come in with the exact same observations, which are very sharp, and P&amp;Z, I think, has done a good job handling them. So the lighting is always shoebox cutoff lights, and you know, the buffering and everything else you pretty much mentioned. We have sort of ground through, maybe in 1980, we made a few mistakes, but since then, I think we've worked it out, so everybody's usually very happy with these undertakings.
Sure, and I, I think the Civic Association is very confident that that will, that will happen, although will unfortunately be uneasy until it's, until it is done. So anything that can be done to sort of expedite the process and get it taken care of sooner rather than later would be much appreciated, so we can rest easy, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot for coming in. Does anybody else want to make a comment? Seeing no other hands, is there any questions for Deviana from council? Go ahead, Jane.
I really appreciate the changes that I'm seeing, and I just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, I think, I want to compliment planning and zoning staff because I know that that cooperation between Llewellyn Farms Mid-Century, Waterford, was so much appreciated, and I think it always makes for a better result when we have the input of everybody because honestly, not only is the Metro Blazer, France Road area going to bring in economic development, it's going to create an amenity to the, to the neighborhoods. I think that it's going to be an exciting, bring up property values for all of you and, and give you something more in your neighborhood than you've had before, so I hope that that's, that's how it'll all turn out. A couple of things, and I just kind of wanted to go through a few pages and things. On, on page 27, under the, under the land use recommendations, one of the, one of the things that, that struck me was, I would love to see you add, as one of the recommendations, this topic of connectivity. And, and looking at what the top four, the top four uses that the workers wanted, their top four request were, 60% wanted retail and restaurants, 52% had walkability, 40% wanted walking and biking trails, and 33% wanted green space. Those were higher percentages than new buildings and new lighting and all of that. So I honestly think a recommendation for the land use needs to concentrate on that connectivity that addresses walkability, walking trails, and bikes, and I'd like to see you add that. And that emphasis needs to be on the softer amenities of connectivity and green space. I see that in option 1 and 2, we have a central green, and it's just speaks about standard walking and biking trails. I'd like to see on page 38 that you take out the linear walkable spine and, and possibly even add a option C, because it doesn't really leave you any room for any organic design. I think option C might be able to offer an organic design that incorporates interconnected green spaces, walkable bike connections that invite social interaction and connectivity utilizing the place-making principles, and I can kind of give you a little copy of this. But I think sometimes we kind of, when it comes to place-making, and I, I also want to speak to that, if we have the opportunity for an organic design in green space, we might be able to take ourselves out of the box of just saying it'll either be a linear green space or just a standard square. I think that this, all these acreages has the opportunity to have something maybe a little bit more organic, and I want to be able to see that option in there. I would like that. And on place-making principles, I don't think many people really know what place-making principles are, and I know there's a lot of definitions, but if we do want to say to our area, to our commissioners, we need you to decide whether or not this fulfills place-making principles, I think we should actually define the place-making principles. And to me, in, in one of the places that I, that I read about place-making principles, streets as places, I'll just give you an example of what I think of as place-making principles, and I think it's kind of worth the discussion. Inviting and rich in detail, designed for lingering, interactive and social, safe, unique, accessible, flexible, and offering great activities and destinations. That opens up a That opens up a criteria standard that you can actually have clarification on, because as a commissioner, you look at and say, well, does it have placemaking principles? Well, I don't really know what those are, and what am I looking for? And that kind of addresses this sort of abstract sense that is exactly what we're trying to get into, because we can always address zoning in the way the building looks and how, how it's built, but we can't really address this other stuff unless we actually define it. And then on page fifty-two on the corridor of Franz Road, I think we do need to, kind of council needs to make a decision on whether or not we actually want to pursue the separate bike multi-street use roadway. The dispatch had an article, the city council in Columbus is looking at how to work out these E motor scooters and golf carts, and if this is the spine going north and south through Dublin, I think we really have to tackle that, whether or not we're going to have this path. So under, I would like you to add on page sixty-one, I'm being specific so nobody will understand what I'm talking, so they'll, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. Under implementation and mobility, I think it should say, complete walking, biking, multimodal, and last mile transportation options. Last mile being those things you hop on to get the last mile of wherever you're going. So think about this, if you take a little E scooter to the office and you want to take, have dinner, have lunch over at La Chateauneuve Lane, you might hop on your E scooter, right, and you want to get there safely, and you got to figure out how to do that. So I think I'd like to see you add that wording. And then on page sixty-five, under buildings, where it says architectural variety is encouraged, I think you should say preferred. And on page sixty-four, under development and design principles, we need to state what the principles are, as Kathy says, Ms. Rosa says, definition gives clarity, to make sure that those principles are easy for commissioners to interpret, and I gave you examples. So those are, those are the specifics, and I, I hope that's helpful. All right, thank you.
Well, we would need a motion to amend.
I, I think you'd need to redline this and bring it back, is my personal opinion. That's a lot of changes.
It's pretty significant changes. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I was just, but so I know, if for us to incorporate Jane's comments, we would have to amend the plan as it currently is, so we're probably looking at postponing this for two more weeks to make those amendments, unless we were to call a question and pass it without suggestions, which I don't think we're going to.
Well, you're, you're asking for amendments, but everybody needs to look at them, understand them, and buy into them, because it may be some, it may be all, it may be none. So at the end of the day, it's going to require further discussion, in my view.
I, I think you're exactly right, Mike, so I guess I just want to let, let everybody know, it looks like we're going to be putting it off for two more weeks, so if you've got more comments to add, let's try to get them all out there so we can do that, and go.
Great. Thank you. And Jane, I, I agree with the placemaking, that, that is a good set of definitions that I've not heard articulated so well, and it does make it easier to understand, and maybe the staff will want to add more or whatever to that, so I applaud that. I had, last time, one of my comments was concern about diversity of look and feel. A lot of the examples, and I see there's been some changes to that, were, they all felt similar, as we recall, and I see that you've updated, and I appreciate that. On page sixty-six, to be specific, I think this language was amended a bit to try to be sure that we encourage this diversity in architectural design, so it doesn't feel the same. And the language that currently says that buildings should be complimentary and not redundant. I'd like to see some stronger language around, that we would have something more than, than just that to help us with the diversity issue, and I know, to Chris's point, there was some conversation about using of other materials, and I see that some of that is added. But what our resident mentioned tonight, that as important are things like character and integrity with surrounding communities and those types of things, to create that look and feel. And I think we could strengthen that language and get some more definition around it, so when someone's bringing those designs back, we're seeing, we're seeing that explicitly in, under that area. So if you could, since we're, we're going to send it back, if we could, could add some more specific language around that, because people could say, well, that's, that isn't, that is complimentary, it's not redundant, it's a different color than the one here, and it's complimentary and it's not redundant. I just think we need some more, and making sure it matches charact, I, I just think those are important enough from lessons learned, that I would like to see that, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Chris?
I have a couple of questions. I, I think the description of the application of materials is significantly better, so thank you for that undertaking, it is much appreciated. I think we'll get a broader use of materials as a result of that. I do have, it looks like we changed out a few of the picture, the images, to match up with that. I would just want to kind of look at the images that we're providing and see if they meet the massing and scale of what we're hoping for in this code. By that, I, I am referring to some of the buildings on page sixty-seven of your draft plan, and I guess sixty-six and sixty-seven. We have an image of what appears to be about a twelve-story glass building, and I don't know if that is meeting the size and scale that we're shooting for in that. I just want the images to be very representative of what we're looking for, because, you know, the old adage is a picture is worth a thousand words, and we can accomplish a lot with these pictures and directing people to the kinds of buildings that we want. So I, I think just in those images, if we're going to be bringing this back, to have a broader, a broader representation of the buildings that we really want in terms of height and scale, that would be appropriate for the area. My second comment is on page seventeen of, let's see, it's seventeen of the doc, of the, it's number twelve, page twelve of the draft copy, the seventeenth page of the report, you have the parking ratios of what's below average, average, above average, and so on and so forth. We were very fortunate with the Ring's Road building there, that there was vacant land adjacent, so although that parking isn't referenced in this document, I think it took it from an average to probably above-average parking ratios, if not to the level of high, so. But I, I'm wondering if we ought to introduce the thought of parking decks, particularly along Metro Place north and south, particularly around, you know, Metro Five, some of those buildings where we're not going to have any ability to put in any extra parking, because the lot coverage is already such that it's about maxed out. So we might want to start introducing the concepts of that parking, parking decks would be encouraged, and we would be supportive of those when we talk about these parking ratios, particularly in the sites that are, you know, average or below average at present. I don't know, you know, when I, when I look at this, I don't know how you would, on the inside loop of the, of Metro Place, I don't know how you'd solve those problems. There's a couple ponds you could take out, but then you have nothing for your stormwater, so there's, there's nowhere to go. Unless we are okay with below average for in perpetuity, we probably need to start discussing parking decks. Other than that, I, I really appreciated the, all of the work that goes, that's gone into the evolution of this document, and I think it, I think we are continuing to improve it, so I'm encouraged by that.
I just want to comment, Chris, I was thinking earlier, and I know garages and parking decks are expensive, they're not cheap, but mixed use, if on the lower level, we have restaurants and, and retail and services, and if we, if we could park anything above that, or even underground, I don't, I don't really know, I'm not the construction manager, but in this mixed-use flexible, where you kind of combine these uses, might be something that would free up more space for more buildings, for more office space, whatever, I'd be certainly supportive of that.
Certainly, the parking garages get really expensive. Sometimes when you do decks, there's a number of them out at Easton where they're, they're just that, you could enter the top deck, or you can enter the lower deck, there's not interior circulation, and those are far more cost-effective. You get a lot more parking spots, and you don't have the internal networking and the ramps and so on and so forth. So I, garages may be cost prohibitive there, but decks might be more something that, might be feasible.
So Deviani, do you think you have enough, where you could maybe, here's what I suggest we do, if you could, like Mike said, redline, bring us a copy that has a redline so that we can go through and maybe decide whether each amendment is appropriate or not, because I don't want all of them to just be put in there, and then we don't pass it that way, and then we're in a mess. So if you could maybe, whatever you can do with all that, put redline suggestions into it, bring that back, and then we'll go through the amendments one at a time, and then ultimately pass. Is that okay, Jen? Is that right, Dana? Do you do that? Okay, I make a motion, then we postpone this, the vote on this ordinance until the September tenth council meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you, Deviani. Ordinance forty-eight dash eighteen, Anne.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to LSP Technologies, Inc., to induce a to lease a facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement.
Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. No additional information, unless you have any questions from the previous reading. However, I do have Eric Collett here, who is the chief operating officer from the company, to speak a little bit more about the project, their company's operations, and answer any questions you have about their particular expansion project. So Eric, I'll invite you to the podium there, please.
Welcome, thank you for coming in.
Thank you, Jeremiah, thank you, Mayor Peterson. Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I don't have any slides to share, but if I did, it would probably involve engineers crammed in the small office. We haven't started stacking them yet, but we're close. The, the business that I joined about two and a half years ago, we had about twenty folks on payroll at that point in time. We've just hired our forty-fourth, so, you know, we've actually added about twenty-three folks so far this year. They haven't all necessarily started, but, you know, we're certainly experiencing some, some rapid growth due to basically a redirection of the business that started about five years ago. So that growth started a, a search for real estate, it's about six months ago. You know, the business started in Dublin twenty-three years ago, so we're fairly rooted here. Jeff Delaney brought the technology out of Batel, and the business has been on Shearer's place since he started the business, six-suite building, eighteen thousand square feet. He took them over, you know, one at a time as folks moved out, and it's clearly not suitable for our needs today, so the real estate market's tight. We, we kind of defined our search criteria, Roberts Road to seventy-one, trying to stay on the northwest side, and, you know, a warehouse space and industrial space with enough room for, you know, growth, seventy-five to a hundred folks, they're pretty hard to find. So we, we ended up with three properties that kind of made the cut. One was on Roberts Road, one was a new build on the south end by the airport in Delaware, and then the third that we're hopeful for is actually the Safety Solutions Ranger property off of Shamrock. So, you know, we're, we're pursuing that facility. Quite honestly, it's about fifty percent too big, so we're going from one extreme to another. As we luck, we were kind of targeting forty to fifty thousand square feet, that facility is sixty-five. So, you know, the challenge is try to figure out what to do with that, but the proximity, this is so good for us, we've, we've worked too hard to acquire talent to, to think about potentially losing any because we moved to, to Delaware, is something that we weren't willing, rather not have to, to, to go through right now. So, you know, that's where we are today. You know, the, the business, future for our business looks extremely optimistic, extremely promising. We've actually pivoted from being a toll processor, you know, folks sending us their components, we process them and ship them out, to actually being a capital equipment manufacturer, so we're building laser peening solutions in our facility and to an international market. So our equipment's installed in Asia, our equipment's installed in, in Europe right now, and so, you know, we're, we're exporting significantly and continuing to hire, and ultimately, we plan on, you know, continuing to add over the next few years. I'll pause there and answer any questions that you may have.
Fantastic, Eric. We're so thrilled to have you here, and more importantly, to keep you here. My favorite sentence in the memo we got was, "They conducted a competitive real estate search across central Ohio communities, and you chose to stay here." So that, that, you're the backbone of this community.
We, I mean, we enjoy Dublin, you know, we certainly looked at other areas, but I'm going to leave here tonight and meet a contingent of customers coming in from a major European aircraft manufacturer, let's say, and it's nice to host them in Dublin, you know, and so, you know, that just, the, the, the area is conducive to, to bring in a lot of international guests in, we're working on a joint venture in China right now, those folks, you know, spend a lot of time over here, and so, you know, we'd like to stay here.
Sounds like you got to go.
I mean, we enjoy Dublin.
Yeah, you got to, what are you doing here? Go get busy.
They don't, they don't get in until nine-thirty. I'm not going to say I got a lot of time, but I got time to get everything.
Well, Dana and his staff, Jeremiah, and what those folks do, they are, they are specifically targeting exactly companies just like you for exactly that reason.
Yeah, well, we're, we're happy to be here, you know, we, it's, there are a lot of high-tech jobs. Quite honestly, our, our hourly, for lack of a better term, footprint is pretty light. All of our, all of our ad has been in the, you know, we're hiring engineers, we're hiring technicians, we're searching to find, you know, talented laser folks, which are few and far between, and bring them into, in central Ohio.
We met the LSP folks back in two thousand seven, I believe it was, and to watch you guys just keep, I'll use the word pinging away at this, no pun intended, has just been a phenomenal technology, and to grow it the way you have, it's just been, it's been great to watch, so.
Yeah, we're having a lot of fun.
Congratulations.
Well, hopefully in ten years, you'll be out of space, and you'll say we need more room.
Well, the lot's buildable, so, you know.
Well, there you go.
I also would like to compliment Eric and his team for being very open and transparent, and a very small window to turn around what we were going to do with them. It doesn't happen all the time that we get all of the information, including all the competitive sites, detailed down to almost dollars and cents on how it was going to lay out, so that we can make sure we close those gaps and make sure that we provide them value rather than just doing something for the sake of doing something. So I appreciate their open transparency on that.
Fantastic, great, thank you very much. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one dash eighteen together. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
We need to vote on the first one, the economic development agreement.
Oh, I want that one, I skipped right past it. Okay, could we, Anne?
Yes, Mr. Reiner.
On this great deal we just talked about?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Now I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one, eighteen together. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Forty-nine, eighteen is determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, declaring an emergency. Ordinance fifty-eighteen, levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, declaring an emergency, and ordinance fifty-one, eighteen, authorizing improving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, OmniBlazer LLC, and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Special Assessment Agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, and OmniBlazer LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvements projects and declaring an emergency.
Jeremiah?
The only additional information I think Anne sent was an ordinance fifty-eighteen. There is an additional amendment sent out today with the list of the special assessments. Other than that, there's no other information to add.
Anne, can you just clarify, again, I think you did before, but the reason why we're passing this as an emergency?
Yes, so the, the ordinance in itself, and this process, we're simply a pass-through. There is no financial obligation on the city's behalf, and we're doing this so that the closing can commence immediately, basically tomorrow, the next, tomorrow or the next day, so they can start the, the implementation of the energy improvement project.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council? I make a motion to treat ordinances forty-nine, eighteen, fifty-eighteen, and fifty-one, eighteen as emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And on the motion?
About in the ordinance, Ms. Fox?
On the ordinance, Ms. Fox?
On the ordinance?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Introduction, first reading ordinances. I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances. Is it, it says 452, is that right?
52.
52-18, 53-18, 54-18 together. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
These determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency. 53-18 levying special assessment for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Dublin, Ohio in cooperation with the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 54-18 authorizing and approving an energy project cooperative agreement by and between the city of Dublin, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, OmniBlazer LLC, and the Columbus Franklin County Finance Special Assessment Agreement by and between. Goodness. We got something to miss here, I think. That OmniBlazer should not be in that one, correct?
Which ordinance title?
I'm sorry. The county treasurer of Franklin County, Ohio, the Columbus Regional Energy Special Improvement District, and OH-15 Dublin LLC, and related agreements, all of which provide for the financing of special energy improvements, projects, and declaring an emergency. These are all for 525 Metro Place North.
That is right, or we need to fix something?
We just need to delete the OmniBlazer and.
Yeah, the title was just a little.
Yeah, it was, it was a typo.
The ordinances are all correct.
And I will introduce all three of those ordinances. Jeremiah?
No additional information on what's on the memo. Again, as you asked, Mayor Peterson, this is also declaring emergency, which will be this done at the second reading on September 10th, for the same reasons that we are doing, have done the other two previous pace projects. Closing will commence immediately following the passing of these ordinances on September 10th.
Any questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on September the 10th on those. Thanks, Jeremiah.
Thank you.
Ordinance 55-18, Anne?
Adopting and enacting a supplement, S-44, to the code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
Jennifer?
Good evening. This ordinance adopts a supplement to the Dublin codified ordinances. It reflects local legislation approved by city council through July 30th, 2018, and state legislation current through April 6, '28. This is a housekeeping measure. We typically do it twice a year, and we recommend approval at the second hearing, public hearing on September 10th. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on September the 10th. I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 56-18, 57-18, and 58-18 together. Is there a second?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ordinance 56-18, this is authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire 0.0188 for temporary construction easement from Mariah Feruzian, trustee of the Enegy Feruzian Revocable Trust Agreement located at 5400 Wilcox Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. 57-18, this is authorizing the execution and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire 0.115 acre fee simple warranty deed for right of way without limitation of existing access rights. And a second, 0.115 acre fee simple warranty deed for right of way without limitation of existing access rights from Philip R. Nollet Jr. and Diana W. Nollet as trustee of the Philip R. Nollet Jr. and Diana W. Nollet Revocable Trust Agreement located at 6280 Rings Roads and 6270 Rings Road respectively, for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. And 58-18, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to acquire a 0.046 acre temporary construction easement and a 0.253 acre fee simple warranty deed for right of way without limitation of existing access rights from Molly Sin K. and Kun K. and Tev Sin located at 6236 Rings Road for the public purpose of constructing a new roadway which shall be open to the public without charge. Need an introduction of those.
I will introduce those. Hi, Megan.
Good evening, members of council. Site acquisition for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension and Avery Road Widening Project, which provides for the extension of Tuttle Crossing Boulevard from Wilcox to Avery Road, was programmed in 2017 and 2018. The project requires acquisition of property interest from several properties, and we've reached agreement on terms with three property owners of four parcels. These ordinances authorize the city manager to execute all necessary conveyance documents to formally acquire the necessary property interest from those property owners. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance numbers 56 through 58-18 at the second reading public hearing on September 10th. So we're going to be bringing these to you in batches, trying to group them together and bring to you, bring them to you a few at a time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have or provide additional information in preparation for the second reading.
Any questions from council?
How many do you have left?
Um, I think there's around 33. And we've issued most of the good faith offers at this point, so we're just working through the conversations with each of the property owners.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you back on September the 10th. Thank you, Megan. Public hearing on resolutions, resolution 49-18, Anne?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Highland Croy Riviera Connector Project.
I'll introduce it. And Megan, you didn't even move, did you?
No, it was pretty easy.
Go.
Good evening. The Highland Croy Road Riviera Connector Project provides for a new roadway, roadway called Casio Lane, which connects the Riviera neighborhood site with the Highland Croy Road. This connection was identified in the traffic study that was performed for the Riviera development. And the infrastructure agreement for the Riviera development that was previously approved by council required the programming of this roadway connection. So staff has been proceeding with the design development of the project pursuant to that infrastructure agreement. The engineer's estimate for this project is 2.3 million, and we received four bids, which was good competition, with the lowest bid being Strauser Paving Company submitting the lowest and best bid of 1.980015.77. We have previous favorable experience with this contractor, and staff has reviewed their bid and recommends approval of resolution 49-18, accepting Strauser's bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Strauser to build this project. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
I just have one. I saw on there that an engineering project inspector was part of this. Is that part of the contract with Strauser? Or is that a separate?
I believe the memo is referring to Dublin's engineering project inspector.
It didn't say. That's why I didn't.
Yeah, the city will have a designated engineering project inspector assigned to the project. So we, we have dedicated inspection staff, and there'll be one that's responsible for that project. And that, that helps provide a point of contact to the residents so they know who to call if there's an issue or a question.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Resolution 50-18, Anne?
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the construction of the Coffman Park Platform Tennis Project.
Matthew?
Good evening.
I'll introduce it. Go ahead.
Platform tennis has dubbed itself as the fastest growing popular sport that you've never heard of.
[laughing]
Done a lot of research in the last couple of years. Excuse me. Resolution 50-18 is to accept the lowest and best bid for the construction of the Coffman Park Platform Tennis Project. There is in the budget for one platform tennis to be constructed on site. We went out to bid for two as an alternate, just to see if we would get a price break on the second. We received quite a price break on the second, but the first one cost more than what we budgeted or estimated. So we are going to forego the second court in hopes that we will continue to expand this new amenity of recreation for the community. The initial phase of utilities and power and so forth is the, the primary issue with the, with the price of this product. The estimate was a little off with those utilities by this tune of about $38,000. We feel confident that we can value engineer some of that back down on the backside of the project, redesigning some of the electrical panel components. Maybe too much information for you, but I thought I'd give you a little background as to why this came in over. Total Platform Tennis is the largest platform tennis company, construction company in the country. They're one of three. And they're right here in Loveland, Ohio. They have quite the reputation in the industry for the past several years. With that, staff is recommending approval.
Any questions from council?
I've got a couple of questions. So the first court is $338,880 for one court. What does a typical tennis court cost us? I realize it's not a platform.
From scratch, probably half that.
Is this something that would be booked out, like our pavilions and so on and so forth? Well, how will, if we're only going to have one, and it's self-titled, "The Fastest Growing Sport We've Never Heard Of," how, how are we going to manage this entity?
We don't have any plans to put it on a reservation system as of yet. We are anticipating some internal programming for instructional use of the court, not knowing how many people actually know how to use it or play the, play the game. So there will be some instruction to it as well. But we anticipate a first come, first serve type of a system, no pun intended. But there are plans to build two additional courts on site. So I guess as the, as the popularity grows and, and we see that need, we will continue to expand the product, or at least recommend to.
And I saw where you were anticipating putting these by the skate park. Are these movable if that property was deemed to be more useful for something else? Can they relocate, or is this fixed permanent?
It's fixed permanent on a foundation. And the product itself is actually constructed with utilities such as a heating element underneath to keep the platform from freezing in the winter months. So it's a 12-month out-of-the-year opportunity. It will be a lit court, so evenings and nights up until about 11 o'clock are also an option.
Most of these facilities have places to go during the winter, like a warming, a little warming shed or that kind of thing. Is this, does this have any, did I miss it in the?
There is a warming room on, adjacent to the restroom facility that was constructed in 2015.
It's part of this construction cost.
So some of this cost will be to some of the heating elements for that, that facility as well.
And what made us pick this spot for these courts?
There were a series of conversations we had about the existing skate park where we had it, where that location was, the basketball courts and the lights and how they interfere with the residents just adjacent there in Terra Hill, and the need for us to create more of a campus-style athletic area, which could be used late night without interrupting those folks over in the residential area. The, the master plan currently includes the relocation or the removal of the existing basketball courts and tennis courts currently in Coffman Park to be located here on this site as well.
You know, at the clubs, it's typically a cold weather sport. You know, after the tennis season winds down and it's not comfortable anymore, that's usually what they turn to. I know.
Tennis and this sport are the highest requests we receive now for, for use.
I mean, that was my question, is was there a lot of people that wanted this over the years?
Yes. The tennis community is asking for this. The tennis community here is, is actually larger than I anticipated years ago. We have hundreds of residents who participate in the league currently that are in need of additional space. This provides them a year-round access.
Do we know the maintenance costs of this, maintaining one of these courts?
No. We are using some very high-energy efficient lighting systems these days, so the lighting costs are very minimal compared to what they used to be five, six years ago. The propane use for this will all be dependent on the use itself and how often people will actually be using during the months of the winter that will need it. It will be on a timing system, so the, the use of the propane itself will only be available for a certain period of time without resetting that system, so it's not running all the time.
Is this set up in the future, or will it be set up for cost recovery as part of our program?
No, this is a park amenity.
Just a general amenity?
Just like our tennis courts and basketball courts we currently have.
Are we, this, you may have already done all this, but I was just sort of curious about pickle, pickleball, and it seems to be just a big rage, and everybody's going down south in Florida for the winter, and they come back and they bring us back up here. Do we have our courts striped for pickleball?
I believe we have four outdoor courts currently striped today, and the recreation center gymnasium floor is striped for pickleball as well. So that's a 12-month-a-year facility now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So where are the closest platform tennis courts today to Dublin?
There is, the closest one from here is off of Industrial Parkway. There's a private club there that is, I think they have eight courts. They have leagues and a private facility for use out there. You can rent their courts, et cetera. They're very popular.
Any other questions from council? Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. I make a motion to waive the council rules of order to consider resolutions 51-18 through 55-18 together. Is there a second?
I second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
And these property owners are resolution 51-18, John E. and Sally S. Leopard, 4780 Bright Road, resolution 52-18, Thomas McDowell and Diane A. Hornan, property along Riverside Drive and Bright Road. 53-18, property from John W. M. Kittrick located on Bright Road. 54-18 is Charles R. Johnson, trustee, property at 4163 Bright Road. And 55-18 is property owned by BRC Properties, Inc., and the Catholic Diocese of Columbus. This is located along Brown Bright Road.
I will introduce all those pieces of legislation. Meg?
Good evening. The sanitary sewer and waterline extensions for areas 4A, 4B, and 4C, which is the area of Bright Road, Riverside Drive, Grandy Cliffs, is the second utility extension project to be implemented arising from the policy council adopted in 2015. The work associated with those extensions has been combined into a single construction project for efficiencies along with the cul-de-sac of Bright Road, which provides for the construction of a cul-de-sac to be located east of Riverside Drive. And that roadway improvement has been planned as a roadway construction project since 2009, 2009, sorry. The project, the both projects together, requires the acquisition of property interest from several properties. To date, the city has presented good faith offers, letters, and appraisal information to five of the property owners, and we have 18 property owners that are impacted for the entirety of the project. So we'll be grouping those together, similar to how I mentioned with Tuttle. We'll be grouping those together and bringing those forward to council at different times. We're hopeful with these acquisitions that an amicable resolution can be reached with those property owners. However, these resolutions that are on your agenda tonight begin the eminent domain process in the event that our negotiations are unsuccessful. Staff recommends approval of resolution numbers 51 through 55 of 18 to allow the project to continue moving forward on schedule.
Any questions or discussion from council?
I just have one question, and it's not about the appropriations, but I saw on here that there's a shared use bike path that will be on the north side of Bright Road. Is that, is that coming soon? Will it happen when this does? Does it make sense to do it when all of this work is eventually done? Or what's the plan on the shared use bike path? Because of the school, it's between Macbeth and I think the school.
The southern side of Bright Road, we're talking about implementing a shared use path between the
It's the southern side.
Pope Elementary School and Macbeth on the southern side. That's part of the CIP discussion for
Oh, it is. Okay.
The next few years.
Okay.
Anything else from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Resolution 57-18?
Authorizing the city manager to run to into a joint use agreement between the city of Dublin and the Ohio Board of Regents. Introduction.
I'll introduce it. Dan? Doug? Doug?
Good evening, members of council. You may recall, we went for a capital grant of $150,000 from the state. In order to receive those funds, we are required to enter into a joint use agreement. And that is the permission that we're asking for this evening.
Any questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan.
On to the other portion of our agenda. Columbus Metropolitan Library Downtown Dublin Parking Garage Master Sign Plan. Jennifer?
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and members of council. This is the master sign plan request for the Columbus Metropolitan Library and the downtown Dublin parking garage. Just to orient everyone, we are talking about the two parcels on the west side of North High Street within the historic district. As you may recall, this has been before you, back in June. And then pending council's review and determination tonight would move forward then to sign permits for these signs. As you may recall, with the master sign plan, we have a variety of signs that were, are proposed for the library as well as the garage building, and then some temporary fence graphics which we reviewed at the previous meeting. All of those signs are, continue to be proposed with the master sign plan. I'm going to go through the changes that are before you from the last time. So at the June 11th meeting, council provided direction to staff to make some changes to four particular signs, which have all been incorporated in the proposal before you tonight. The first of that being the library ground sign, wanting to see some more dimensional design to that, a little more creative, obviously keeping within their brand, but bringing that a little bit more to life. And then also looking at the stone base, seeing if that can be increased and making sure that that matches the building. The second piece was modifying that proposed projecting sign on the garage building, particularly on the North Street elevation, for that to be significantly reduced in scale and design to match the sign that's on Franklin Street. The third element was eliminating the previously proposed painted stairwell signs to help orient and wayfind, but council requested that those be replaced with a more aesthetic and a much smaller graphic to be internal to the garage. And then the fourth part was incorporating the Dublin Branch text to the internal wall graphics. So the first one is related to the library ground sign, which is included in your packet. And then I just have a snapshot of what that looks like here. So again, some additional dimension added to the sign, pin-mounted letters to the various bands and sign panels, including the logo, as well as then the Columbus Metropolitan text. And then the stone base, obviously increased the amount of stone that's being proposed on there. And obviously making sure that that graphically matches with the building, which was council's request. And then the second part was the revisions to that projecting sign. So this has, the sign located on North Street has been modified to then look identical to, in scale and design, to the sign that's proposed on Franklin Street. So it's just the circle with the P, and again, reduce the scale of that as well. The stairwell graphics have also been revised to be a brushed aluminum face with then, letters, dimensional letters that are mounted on top of that. So it gives a little bit of look and feel to that, but very much reduced in scale. So if you're using the garage, you worry yourself when you're in there. So you're not seeing that from the right of way, which was council's previous concern. And the colors obviously still correspond with the colors within the garage. That matches the wayfinding piece as well. And then the final part was incorporating the Dublin Branch. So that has been incorporated on those internal wall graphics, which is located inside the entrance, the vehicular entrance when you come in off of North Street. So with those changes, planning requests approval with no conditions. And I'm obviously available to answer any questions that you have and the applicants here as well.
Any questions from council? Kathy?
I had one. On the P parking, the images that I saw on here, the one, I guess the one on Franklin Street still says the Dublin Parking Garage on it, or did I misread that? Because this one example, there was language, there is no language. Does the other one, the pictures look like it's, still had Dublin Parking Garage on there?
I'm not seeing that on the version that I have, so.
Do you have page numbers or anything, Kathy, that you could?
It may just be, I see what you're saying. So on the oblique angle, it looks like there's, looks like there's some text on the side of that.
Yeah, let me look here, maybe it's, I.
Yeah, that was not the intent, but we can.
Okay, so regardless of what I have in here, the intent is there just, both of them are just a simple P?
Yes.
Sign sign.
Yes.
Those, the stairwell, the ones that you just showed, are those illuminated at night?
They are not at this point. It is just, again, we were trying not to draw more attention to them. We did have that discussion as well. I mean, there's going to be lighting in the stairwell as well. I think you'll be able to see that.
Yeah, I wasn't, I just looked to me like, potentially in the images that it was. And glad to hear that maybe it wasn't included in that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Jane?
Jenny, do, are there signage for book drop and that sort of thing in there? I mean, how do people know where to drop off a book?
The, you'll have to enter the garage, and then there is wayfinding once you're in the garage. And that clearly delineates how to get there and what lane to be in and where that is.
But you won't be able to tell from the outside that there's a book drop inside?
No, there's no external signage.
Did you, did, Eric, do you have a discussion about that? I'm just kind of curious, because I mean, most people wouldn't know that there's a book drop in a garage unless there's a sign that says there's a book drop.
Yeah, that piece was not discussed at ART.
So what's happened in the other ones that you?
Yeah, maybe Allison could come in.
Hi, A. Hi, council, thank you for talking to us tonight. In all of our locations, we don't do a lot of signage around that, but we do a lot of messaging within the branch and a lot of emails out to our customers so that then they know, and then we just, they just figure it out pretty quickly. But there's a big overhead sign, and then there's direction, within the garage. So you really can't miss it.
And they're telling people as they check out an item?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's the most logical way to let them know.
That's right.
Just didn't want to miss anything.
Yeah.
Jenny, I think the, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I think the image Kathy might be referring to is on, it's page 22 of our report. It's page number 15 of the documents, I think, received. It's on the west entry. And there is the circle P, and then vertically, it says Dublin Parking Garage. So there's two different.
Right, I see that now that you're saying that. I was looking at that, just that one specific graphic. I mean, we could, we could do it either way. So if council prefers that to be on there, that's fine. If not, that's fine too. I mean, everyone knows that you're, it is, I mean, the circle P is that universal symbol. So I think you know where you are, but.
Hopefully, I'm sorry. No, I would say my preference is no language on it.
Right.
Because you've got a big sign that says library parking and a big sign that says public parking.
If you don't know you're in Dublin, you shouldn't be driving.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, on the east.
I mean, you're trying to find the book drop here, so.
On the east side, when we have multiple garages, my understanding is that's why some of those say longshore entrance. So it would be sort of giving you cues when there's other garages about which garage you're in, so.
I just don't know, you know, it's such a nice clean look without it. The other P was a really clean look. This just looks, it doesn't give any useful information. If it said public parking or something else, it would be different. But it, I would think, just a clean look on that. So maybe tighten up that image.
Okay.
I think the other image was already cleaned up that I saw.
Do we need to vote on that, Jennifer, since there's two? Okay, and I make a motion that we use the image that's in tile number five that just has the blue background with the white letter P with nothing else, as opposed to tile number 15 that says Dublin, whatever it says, Dublin Parking Garage, or. So we go with number five over number 15. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
That was all I had, and thank you for moving the numbers and changing the paint. I think it looks a lot, it looks very crisp on the, what was it? It's a brushed stainless steel look of sorts.
Great.
Those not being visible from the exterior of the garage, I think, is going to really help the aesthetics of it.
Great, thank you.
Really nice. I make a motion that we approve the master sign plan.
Second.
Anne?
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Ms. Rosa.
Yes.
Megan, you're back.
Yeah, good evening once again. Staff provide an update on the procurement of Dublin Solid Waste Services as part of your April 5th, 2018 packet. And we've included that memo once again in the packet for this evening. The memorandum provided background information on Dublin's partnership with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, or as we refer to them as SWECO, and other central Ohio communities that we partner with, and we refer to that group as the consortium, to jointly bid solid waste services in an effort to obtain quality services at competitive prices. The status of the city's current solid waste services contract, as well as the plans for bidding future services, was also provided in that memo. Specifically, staff requested input from council regarding a proposal that we had received from SWECO that outlined some best practices that they were encouraging Dublin to consider, that they believe would increase recycling, efficiency, and community appearance. During the April 9th meeting, as we were discussing that memo, during the city council meeting, city council referred the matter to the Community Services Advisory Commission for consideration and a recommendation on the recommended best practices that we had received from SWECO. The commission gave the topic a great deal of time and consideration discussing the topic at their May 15th and August 14th meetings. They considered and discussed detailed information, including the background of the consortium, Dublin's current solid waste services, and the program that we've had in place, and procurement process presented by Dublin staff. And then we turned the presentation over to representatives from SWECO who discussed their best recommended, or their recommended best practices. And they shared information from a regional perspective, because they helped many of the local communities in the region with their bidding and with their program. And they also guide us in terms of how we can increase diversion and recycling. So they presented information on the region, or from the regional perspective, about consortium compositions, solid waste collection service providers, collection days of the week, industry feedback, because they had surveyed all the service provider haulers, and their recommended best practices. And they provided recommended best practices to each of the consortium communities, because all the communities have very different programs in place. SWECO's proposal and the presentations from the May 15th CSAC meeting were included in your packet for this evening as well. Discussing the procurement process a little bit before I turn it over to Marilyn Baker, we do have the ability to extend the existing contract for another one-year term. That's the last extension that we have an option of through 2019. In conjunction with the consortium, we recently went out for bid, tested the water similar to what we did last year. And we also took the opportunity to bid several options that would implement or consider implementing some of the recommended best practices that SWECO had identified, so that we could compare all the different bid options. We did receive bids on July 25th, and we're currently reviewing those bids. So the plan wasn't to get into the specifics of those bids this evening. But just as a preview, we unfortunately did only receive bids from one bidder again this year. We were hoping to make some change, we were hoping that the consortium had made some changes so that we could attract increased competition. That didn't happen. So we do have a one bidder again, but we do have a status quo bid that we're reviewing, as well as five different program options that they submitted bids for. So we're reviewing the intricacies of each of the bid options that they submitted at this time. So as far as this evening goes, CSAC's recommendations and input from council, we're hoping that the discussion tonight will inform staff's bid analysis. So we'll take your input as we, into consideration as we look at the bid options that we'll be discussing and bringing back to council in the near future. So again, we have the decision to make, not this evening, but next meeting or the next meeting. We'll be looking at whether we extend the existing contract for one more year through 2019, or whether there's another best bid option out there that we want to consider. So with that, a little bit of background, I'd like to introduce Marilyn Baker, who's the vice chair of CSAC, and she's going to present CSAC's recommendations this evening.
Thank you, Megan. Welcome, Marilyn.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. I know you guys put a tremendous amount of time into that committee, and you're doing a lot of really important stuff, so.
That's great, as so does staff, give us a lot of time.
Absolutely. So tell us what you think about this.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Baker, 5423 Wine Tavern Lane, and I'm vice chair of the Community Services Commission. I'm here on their behalf. The members, as you heard, had the opportunity to learn all about Dublin's solid waste services and were pleased to come here tonight with our recommendations. First, we want to say that the commission members were very satisfied with the information presented to us by both the Dublin staff and the SWECO representatives. It was very thorough, very extensive and professional. We're impressed, although not surprised, that SWECO said that Dublin has always been in the forefront of advancing recycling in the community. And we learned that Dublin's recycling rate in 2017 was 47%, and only one other community in the region had comparable figures. We're also very fortunate as a community when we learned that Dublin listened to its residents and for the Monday collection of the yard waste, they put in an extra element into the contract, the current contract, so that our yard waste is picked up on Mondays, which makes it convenient for the weekend. So again, we're very fortunate in this community. In addition, earlier this year, the National Citizen Survey was conducted. And overall, the City of Dublin received very favorable feedback on solid waste services, including garbage collection, which came in at 91% positive, recycling at 86% positive, and yard waste pickup at 92% positive. We also, as Megan mentioned, learned about the regional perspective from the SWECO representatives and the input from the hauling industry, which gave a lot of very helpful background to the decisions that were presented, to the recommendations presented to us, as well as the best practices SWECO has recommended for Dublin's consideration. We learned about survey results of the pilot program initiated in Dublin in 2003. And those consisted of approximately 1,200 households. These households were provided wheeled carts with attached lids for both refuse and for recycling, the majority being 64-gallon containers. While the pilot was intended to just be one year, the program continues to this day. The residents in the pilot program were surveyed, 91% were in favor of keeping both containers and continuing the services. My household and I believe two other members on the commission are part of this program. We definitely are supporters of the services. Members of the commission who are not part of the pilot program and who just learned about it were expressed envy. The Community Services Advisory Commission supports Dublin's effort at being at the forefront of advancing recycling in the community. Commission also encourages Dublin to continue to be the leader in recycling and reducing waste and diverting it solid waste. So after careful review and consideration of all the information provided by Dublin and SWECO staff, the commission recommends to council that it consider implementing the following solid waste service changes at the appropriate time and when pricing is competitive and where there's adequate opportunity in order to provide the comprehensive communication and education to residents as programs may change. First, we recommend Dublin move forward on a Uniform Two cart collection system. It's similar to the pilot program. The system ensures that, to increase residential recycling, to reduce blowing litter, to improve the appearance of the community on collection day, and to reduce worker injuries through the automated and semi-automated collection, and to improve significantly on the collection efficiency. So the commission supports both carts to be owned by the city. It supports the recycling cart to be blue, although there was some discussion on that. However, we were informed that blue provides an easily recognized cart in the region, recycling cart in the region, so it wouldn't create any confusion for the haulers. It's a nationwide industry standard for recycling. And it's, we also support the refuse container then being either green or brown. Again, those are the two colors used in the pilot program, and we thought they went very well. The commission further recommends a standard cart size be 64 gallons. However, we also recommend that the residents have an option, that they can actually have a 96-gallon or a smaller one, which would be 32-gallon carts upon request, instead of the 64. So second, we recommend Dublin provide streamlined bulk collection for items such as furniture, swing sets, appliance, anything that's bulky. And that includes very, say, boxes that a bike would come in, which normally would go through the recycling. If you can't break it down and use it, that would be a bulk. Bulk pickup would be on the first collection day of the month, the first Wednesday of the month. And then if a resident has additional bulk items that need to be picked up later in the month, an additional collection could be offered on the third collection day of the month, would be third Wednesday. Resident in this case, however, would have to schedule for a collection in advance to make a re- make a request, and this is similar to the chipper service collection requests. This varies a little different to current policies in which everything is, extra items are collected each week. Third, we recommend Dublin limit collection to cart contents only. This means all refuse and recycling must be placed in the provided carts for it to be collected. If a resident needs additional space for trash, they can move to a larger cart, or they can choose to purchase a second cart. Commission is convinced that utilizing these best practices, which are the two-cart system, the streamlined bulk collection, and the cart contents only in its solid waste collection, will result in increased recycling, enhanced community aesthetics, and hopefully more competitive bids in the region over the next decade. Will minor inconveniences be experienced by residents? Most likely. The benefits of this program changes to improve the appearance in the community on collection day and to reduce environmental impacts, however, we believe far exceeds the potential for the minor inconveniences. Critical towards the success of this program, however, would be a comprehensive communication and education program campaign in advance of implementing the changes, so to avoid confusion and to address concerns about any of the changes that will be made. Therefore, the Community Services Advisory Commission encourages Dublin staff and city council to look favorably upon the bid options that propose implementing these best practices as they review and consider the collection bids that were received on July 25 of this year. I want to take this time as well, on behalf of the Community Services Advisory members, to express our appreciation for the work and all the time dedicated to this discussion with the participation of Dublin staff and SWCO staff. This is very typical of the services and attention that the city provides to this commission. Commission members recognize the importance of solid waste services and its impact on the environment, and we appreciate the opportunity to have reviewed Dublin's current services. And thank you for the opportunity now to make these recommendations. Thank you.
But, you know, when we were appointing people, and we wanted a professional board and commissioner, that we sure got what we paid for. Thank you, Marilyn, very much.
Thank you very much.
I mean, holy, holy cow. Yeah, we got to be careful. I did have one question. What happens, and I get it, I understand all of the, what happens like at Christmas, where, you know, this is what happens in my house, we have like six bags of old paper, you know, that we stuff down into garbage bags, and now, and they won't fit even in my 96-gallon thing, whatever you call that. What do I, what do I do then on two days after Christmas?
I'd say, sit and stomp on all the paper products you put in the, in the white bags, yeah.
That's the, that's the big question.
And we also had that same discussion with the SWCO representatives, and they're aware of contracts out there, and I believe our contract would provide the same thing if and when we were to adopt some of these program changes, but there would be an exception around the holidays, similar to how we have the Christmas tree as a separate pickup. There could be exceptions.
So we could have, like, I don't know whether there are other days of the year that, I don't know, like maybe after the 4th of July, is that a particularly heavy garbage day after the 4th? Would we be able to provide expanded days on those days to?
If it's called out in the contract.
Yeah.
So it would really depend on how the contract's worded and what exceptions are permitted by the contract, but after Christmas would definitely be one of them.
Any other question?
I have a question. Apartment buildings, we're doing a lot of that now. What's the best practice thought about recycling to encourage that in?
So we didn't discuss commercial service, the focus of the discussion with CSAC this time was residential services. So I believe that by code, building code, anything for, any building containing four structures or more is considered commercial, so we didn't, that wasn't part of this program.
So this addresses single-family service only. Some of that would include condominiums that have a drive to a public street, or not necessarily to a public street. As far as apartment recycling, we have, it's not been something that the city has emphasized. However, I do know that some of our apartment complexes do recycle. Sometimes that's an additional charge or service to the resident, but like I know Asherton does it, I know that Bridge Park offers that as well. I'm not sure about Taller Flats, but some of them are, do offer that.
I've just heard from some of the millennials who are very, very recycle-conscious here that they didn't necessarily have that service, and why not was the question to me, because that's what we should be doing, so. So that is really up to the landlord.
It is, and we've toyed with commercial recycling in office complexes as well with SWCO over the years. We've done pilot programs with them dating way back, but that's not quite something that's taken off yet. Some businesses will do that on their own, because they see the value of reducing the amount of recyclables that are in their dumpsters, right? There can be cost savings, so that's kind of been more market-driven by the tenant or the building owner. I know SWCO's had starts and stops with that initiative, but I don't know of anything new or different that they're doing there.
Well, as part of, you know, I mentioned that SWCO provided best practice recommendations, and something that we discussed with the consortium was something that SWCO included in the bid process this round was a provision where commercial multifamily could piggyback off of the price that the communities received as a bid for recycling, or for processing of recyclings. So that could be something that we put out there and advertise as a, hey, this is the city's price for the processing of recycling, commercial, other entities, you have the option of contacting Rumkey or the other service provider and hopefully obtaining the same price. So that's something that they're recommending and encouraging, that communities do that and offer that up as an option for commercials. So it's one step in that direction, I believe.
Megan, so you've said that the prices were higher than what our existing one-year extension is. How much higher were the pricing?
So there were, like I said, there's five different options, they each have different pricing components. If you wouldn't mind, I'd prefer to outline all of that in a memo for the next meeting, because it's really complicated and hard to summarize right here.
So when would you foresee, if we did make a change like this, when would you foresee that we move that, more that direction?
It really depends on the bid analysis and really your feedback this evening as to how we take a look at those bids. And, you know, this bid cycle is for implementation January of 2019. So we would also need to have that discussion about, you know, do we have enough time to implement some of these changes? That's something that Marilyn mentioned in her talking points, is, you know, CSAC's recommending council consider this, and staff consider making some changes when the pricing's right, which we're reviewing the bids now and seeing how all the options shake out. I mean, the options vary from, you know, city owning containers, to renting them from Rumkey, to unlimited cart contents, to cart contents, or, you know, you can provide, you can put stuff outside of the container to cart contents only. There's just a lot of nuances with each of the bid options. But, you know, their recommendations, I mentioned, when the pricing's right, and also when we have enough time to implement such changes and make sure that we communicate them effectively. She referenced the pilot project also that was implemented in 2003, that's been around all these years, and I wasn't around when that was implemented, but I know it can be a lot of work, right? Dana was here. It can be a lot of work to roll out all the carts and get everybody educated on the new program, so that's, that's going to be part of the discussion as we consider bids.
Can you gather some information for me at the next meeting, which would be, the members of the consortium, who pays what, how, you know, the city pay it, do the residents pay it? Just give me a breakdown of all the, all the members of the consortium and how they pay, okay?
Okay, whether the residents pay Rumkey direct, there's a whole variety, but definitely can.
Lay that out for us, so we can see that, because I think, what do we have, two, two and a half million dollars in this?
Yep.
Yeah.
And Dublin is, you will see that Dublin is one of the few, if not only, that the entire bill comes to Dublin and Dublin pays that bill. Yes, I figured you did.
You know, currently, they've been very good, I noticed, and back to Greg's question, at Christmas, if there's a cardboard box and you have an extra container, they take it. And are you inferring that in the future, one of the bid options is outside the container, or is, their service has been really pretty good. I've noticed they pick up all kinds of things that are not in that blue container and other things, so. I don't know, are they changing that program, or?
It's all by contract, so the recommendations that Marilyn mentioned to go to the two-cart system, one of the reasons that you would go to the two-cart system is it allows Rumkey to provide automated services, which means, you know, the truck would come down the street and use arms to pick up the container, so it doesn't require labor to get out and pick up bags. So if we were to have residents putting bags aside, you know, alongside the containers, then you can't really have the automated services and some of those benefits just to realize.
You can buy those, you could buy those at Home Depot or Lowe's or whatever. I know we bought the big one, and they come picking it right up, just like they do the recycle.
Yeah, I think we mentioned as part of the options, and again, I need to see exactly how the bid proposals are written, but one option is to request a larger container. You know, we, we had mentioned that 64-gallon is the typical, we do have some residents that use 95 and some 32, so we'd have that option of going to a larger container for refuse or recycling, and then also we'd have the option of requesting another container.
So would we move forward on, were there any other questions? Trying to figure out where we're at, Jane.
No, just one other. If, you know, I know that there's, it's pick and choose, all these little options, whether you own it, you rent it, whatever. The, the blue recycling containers that we have now, do the, does the city own them?
The city owns those, yes. We received a grant to purchase those several years ago, I don't know the year off the top of my head, but we also maintain those, so our staff in-house, we, or we stock parts for those containers, and we also order new containers as needed and roll those out to residents.
So if eventually we choose the option to go to the two-container system, and one of them is the blue, we have somewhat of a savings, because we already own the blue ones.
Yes, yes, and the bid documents that went out to bid specified that, so they indicated that Dublin already, because we're the only community that has the one recycling container and the resident provides the other.
One of the problems is the size.
Each community is so different.
The sizing, because some of them do not want to put those big ones, they can't put them in their garage, there's no room. We've been down this road before, and so you're going to get a lot of pushback from those that do not have the storage capability, and we also have a rural ordinance law that says, can't put them outside either.
Right. It's a real problem, especially, especially when you have, again, denser environments where people are living in more dense areas, and they really don't have the storage capabilities for these places. I mean, I see it in Historic District, we're always battling that at ARB, where are you going to put these trash cans? But I wanted to ask, on the pilot project, because I, like the rest of you, am trying to clean out my place, and so, did you find that many of the neighbors just adjusted to the fact that they couldn't put anything outside, or they didn't pay any attention to that, they just went to the two?
Currently, you can.
Right, so they didn't adhere to that, so the big question mark is, will people accept the fact that you have to put everything inside?
Right, and you would have the option for Monday, or the first week, that you could put things on the outside, and then request it on the second. So it would leave two weeks out of the month, instead of any time, two weeks out of the month where you'd have to confine, and that would cut the cost, and that's the idea behind that. Also, to the other main point there is for a safety for the haulers.
Right.
Safety issue.
Since we have the standardized blue containers, but they don't pick those up in an automated fashion, is there a reason why they don't?
Well, because right now, we, we don't have cart contents only, and we have the one container, but the, you know, the refuse container is whatever the resident provides, so they just, we just don't have the situation out there where they can provide pure automated services at this time. And as far as the bulk pickup goes, just to add on to what Marilyn said, when I shared that we currently, you know, by contract, we currently provide bulk collection services every Wednesday of the month, several of the members were surprised by that, that they weren't even aware of that. So we had some discussion about how often is that service actually utilized, and, you know, we were going to get some data from Rumkey, but the idea there is for efficiencies with the hauler, because they send a different vehicle, and scheduling would really help them with their planning, you know, they wouldn't have to drive around and locate bulk items, they would know exactly where to go, and they could plan their route and all that. So that's really about cost efficiency.
I think the biggest problem you're going to have is, we really provide luxury trash collection. And it's a big jump to go from not allowing anything outside your can. I think we have to really think about the shock that people are going to have, I mean, we really are, we are like the premier trash collection community. I mean, you don't pay for it, you can put it out whenever you want, I think we might have to, we might have to like tiptoe, stair-step down these services in order to get our residents to not, you know, like, come out with pitchforks and signs or something.
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion amongst the consortium with SWCO. SWCO's recommendation and preference would be that we provide the smallest refuse container possible, and the largest recycling container possible, but in the end, we settled on, no, we need to provide the standard 64 for both, and then provide the option to go up or down, provide that flexibility, because we were envisioning people coming out with pitchforks, as you said.
So with all these questions, I don't know if it's wise to vote on adopting anything tonight, or should we? I mean, I, what do you think?
I'm sorry, wise to what?
Well, would it be, it has here that we adopt the recommendations of CSAC, but I hear all these other questions from council that they're asking, begging for additional information.
Well, and we tried to word them in such a way that, where's the beginning of it? That the commission recommends to council, consideration be given to implementing, so it's consideration be given to.
Okay.
So we were, we were looking to hear your feedback tonight as to, you know, do you absolutely never want to consider going the two-cart system, or are you open to considering that when the time is appropriate, when the pricing's competitive, and when there's opportunity to provide comprehensive? So it doesn't necessarily mean we're going to come to your next meeting and recommend that we adopt all these program changes at once. It's just, should we consider them or not, and how do we go about getting to them if there is, if we do hear the desire to go in that direction?
I didn't, I didn't hear the question, line of question, the questions are great. I didn't hear a line of questioning that would, that would tend to deviate much from the recommendations, I don't think, unless I misheard, but to continue down this road is what we would, we would recommend.
The only thing that I would say is, is I think there is a question about whether or not people can put everything in the car, in the trash can. I like the two, the two-can thing, but I, but I'm not, I'm not sure that you're going to get great acceptance by the community if everything has to go in, in there, and then that, that kind of changes part of the, you know, what, with the cost-cutting measure.
Whether the vacuum.
Right. I can even see maybe sharing the cost by residents buying the can, and maybe that would help. We buy one, they buy one, I mean, I don't know, but I think that's going to be the pushback, is not being able to put everything going in the can. I think we're going to have a problem with that.
Okay, but we can address that problem, I agree with you, Jane, we can address that problem later when we revisit this.
Yeah, I think, I think the bid prices and the possible increases are going to sort of direct us into a lot of this. I think that's what's going to happen.
And then also the cost of owning carts, purchasing carts worldwide versus renting them from the bidder, so we just have to do that whole cost analysis on all the different options.
Okay, well then, for purposes of the evening, I'll make a motion that we approve the CSAC recommendations.
Second.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Adoption of the 2019 council meeting schedule, Chris.
Mayor, if I, if I may real quick, I just want to, on behalf of staff, thank Community Service Advisory Commission for all the great work they do, really appreciate all their help, it's tremendous help. I also, while he's here, want to introduce Michael Darling. Michael, would you just stand up real quick? Michael's our new operations manager in Streets and Utilities, who is heading up a lot of the work around our solid waste management services, and he comes to us from Rumkey, so he knows the community pretty well, so it's, it was a great find for us, we want to welcome Michael on board, too.
He was teaching me a lot today, and the stuff I was saying, I was like, well, really, what happened? No.
So that, I just want you to have a face to the name when you, when you make those calls about, about pickup.
Fantastic.
So he's assuming many of the duties that Beth Lozier had, if you were familiar with Beth.
All right. Great, thank you. Chris, meeting schedule.
Yes, so you have seen a number of times our proposed 2019 meeting schedule. So we have a couple of decisions to make. If everyone is comfortable when speaking to this this evening, hopefully you have found some time to review your calendars and review this as well. I will start with the first meeting of the 2019 calendar year. We have two options, Monday, January 7, which is National Championship Football Game. In light of recent events, I think all our schedules might be available, but perhaps we would want to look at the 8th versus the 7th, is there a preference regarding that?
I'd say the 8th.
The 8th, okay. Dualy noted, and we will move that to Tuesday, January the 8th. We have two options for our retreat schedule, one being February 7th, 8th, the other being the 21st, 22nd. I would only mention that the 21st, 22nd would lead us into I would only mention that the 21st, 22nd would lead us into a lot of time together in a very short period of time, although it is well documented how much I enjoy all of your company. We may want to look for the 7th and 8th, just so that the end of February, beginning of March, isn't quite so compact.
No, I, I think it's great. The earlier, the better.
7th and 8th.
7th and 8th, everyone's okay with that? So, Anne, please make that. We have two executive session options on February the 27th or March the 6th for our performance evaluations. We do have a regular meeting on the 25th, which would, the 27th would be two days after that. We do not have a regular meeting the week, the week of the 4th, so the 6th would be, it would, the preference to you is, do you want to have two meetings in one week and have a week free, or have one meeting in two consecutive weeks? So what is your option preference for one or two? The 27th or the 6th of March? February 27th or March 6th? The 27th, two meetings in one week and having a week without a formal meeting. Very good, Anne. Please make note of that. The next options that we have are, our charter requires that we have a city council, formal city council meeting in July. We try to string together a bit of a break so everyone has opportunity to plan vacation time and so on and so forth. So our options are July the 1st or the 29th. I would illustrate that July the 1st is one week after June 24th, so we would have a meeting in two consecutive weeks. However, our next meeting isn't until August the 12th. So if we went with a July 1st meeting, we would have five weeks without a city council meeting, and that is a long time to not have any business done. If we moved it to the 29th, we would only have four weeks. So.
I'd say July 29th.
I think July 29th is probably the most prudent. Otherwise, we are just going to be on a mad dash on the 24th, another mad dash on the 12th, and we'd be doing too many things and maybe none of them as well as we could.
29.
Those were all of the options that were brought before us, and I guess I would like to entertain any other conflicts or any of these other meeting dates that you have, find problematic. You'll see that the school's calendar has been taken into consideration as has the holiday calendar. Is there any other comments that you'd like to make? We can either adopt this tonight, or Anne can give a revised calendar, and we can rehash this one more time.
Let's adopt.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Anne, please.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Staff comments. Dana?
Good evening, members of council. A few comments. First, I want to just take a moment to acknowledge Fay Gibson. I appreciate that everyone took the time to be there with us last week as we celebrated Fay's retirement. What a privilege for us to have the opportunity to honor her 36 years of public service, wherein she has served the communities of Myhamsburg, Kettering, Upper Arlington, Dublin, and York, with the University of Dayton as well. And just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge her here tonight, so I made her come and sit through this meeting.
Oh.
So that I didn't make her do anything. I can't anymore, but never could, really, but that's another story. But, but I, I just wanted to, to acknowledge Fay, thank her for her dedicated service to this community of 20 years of that 36. I mean, how blessed have we been to have her leadership on our team, as well as, as you all, and as we recounted at her celebration, the leadership that she's provided statewide all these years to so many of her peers and other communities throughout the state. So Fay, thank you for your great service, and we're so proud of you, and we'll all be down to Florida to hang out with you and play golf, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and.
For council people and council people here in Riverside, and elected officials that we have had in the last 20 years, I look forward to hearing more about those going on in the government.
Fay, they livestreamed the meeting, so you can watch them down there.
Yeah, that's right. She'll probably be texting me during the meeting or something.
Probably will be easier.
Golf club in your hand. I'll finish that for you.
I also want to congratulate and knowledge, acknowledge Matt Stifler, who's back in the room. We, he has been promoted to deputy finance director, so very proud that Matt can lean in and compete with all that external competition. He did very well, obviously, and very proud of him, and look forward to all the service that he'll be doing for the city. I, I do want to bring to council's attention that we would like to postpone the development plan slash site plan for Riverside Crossing Park from September 10th, which we had asked for, to now September 24th. I feel much more confident that we'll be ready for September 24th. I hope that's okay with you. And I don't know, Anne, if we need to take any particular action, action for that tonight.
The public know of that change, so we can note that in our council actions and anywhere else.
Okay. Let me make a motion.
Sure.
I make a motion that we postpone the park unveiling from September 10th.
It's the.
Basic plan.
Basic plan and final development plan for Riverside Crossing Park.
Basic plan, yeah, well, the basic plan and the site development plan from September 10th to September the 24th.
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Great, thank you for that. One, one more item. I had a memo in your packet about topics for council work session and some, and proposed dates. I also collaborated with Angel, and I appreciate that, on some finance committee topics. I think she had also talked to Chair Keenan about that as well along the way. Just a couple things here on, this Wednesday, August 29th, we're primarily focused on CIP. If we have time, the other topics would be Historic District and Bridge Street District-related topics. On September 17th, in your memo, I had noted that there would be a presentation on the downtown parking study, which by the way, there is a, there is, the, the draft study is in your packet, given to, given you that early, so you can have some time to read through that. I also had drafted in there the notion of Crawford Hoynes doing a presentation that evening after consultation with the mayor and vice mayor. I'm going to put that under other council calendar and do that on September 24th is the plan right now. So they would come into council meeting under other and present those topics. And what we would probably do then in the balance of September 17th is cover down on any of the Historic District or Bridge Street District topics that we might still need to cover after Wednesday night, depending on how the CIP discussion goes. So there's lots to, to cover down on and do, so I think that provides us a little bit of an opening to do that. So with that, that's, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
On the, on, on the Bridge Street District and over the Historic District pieces that they're starting to collect from the stakeholders, I, I don't know if, if all the, if we could get some of the current information to us before the meeting so that we could just have time to kind of think about it a little bit, if there's information or, or.
Okay, I, I know there were three memos in your packet from Vince about some of the topics and, and, but we, I'll have him take a look at that. If there's more detailed information.
If there's any that other than that.
We'll be happy to do that.
And that was set out on Friday, I think Friday.
Okay.
Is that it, Dana?
Yes, sir.
All right. Council committee reports. I don't know how we're going to, Kyle, John, what do you guys want to do with this facade improvement grant application deal?
Well, I think we need to ask for your recommendation for an approval. We met August 15th, and I think, just to summarize this to make it short, we had a, a request for twenty-five, or for fifteen thousand and ten thousand for a total of 25,000. And I think when we conceived of this idea, we were all thinking of vertical elevations, upgrading the entire downtown as you drove through it. But actually, both these applications are interesting because they came up with interesting foot traffic, ground plane solutions to downtown that are visually going to be very important and also for circulation. So I would hope that you, after reading these, would make a motion for approval.
That's what I will do. I make a motion we adopt the committee recommendations. Anne?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
P&amp;Z representative, Jane? You had something on the.
Well, I did. I did on the other one. And, and first of all, I want to say that I, I think we're absolutely on target for what we intended for the facade program. I think originally, when Historic District businesses asked for some help, they were looking at ways to make sure that things don't go into disrepair. So even though we're finding that it's being used in ways that maybe we hadn't anticipated with a little facelift, there, there are facelifts that, that make a difference, and so I think that's great. One of the, I would like to ask council to consider the possibility, we're towards the end of the year and we have $75,000 left of this year's grants. Fifteen thousand is the minimum. From what I'm hearing from commercial businesses down there, they, they wish you would lower it to $1,000, because they want to do some fix-it-ups, and they can afford to match $1,000 and really do it. Some painting, fix old windows, do a little tuck pointing. They can do those kinds of things as well. So I would like you to at least consider that as, as lowering the minimum. And the other thing that I would ask you to think about in, in the next commission meeting is maybe not a first-come, first-served basis, because once this catches on, it could be gone by April. It would be nice to give it away quarterly. You know, that way, people have an opportunity. They may not want to do anything at the beginning of the year, but they may think that in fall, they can afford to do it, and there might not be any money left. So it's one of these things where we try it out and see how it works. But those are, those are a couple of suggestions I'd like you to think about. And, and the, I don't know how long the approval process takes, but as short as we can make that approval process so that people know that they have the money, they can get, they can turn around and get it approved, they can move on, they can fix it up, and they don't have to wait too long for it. So those are the three considerations.
I think the approval process, if we were here on the 15th, they'll have their approval here on the, the final approval here on the 27th.
That's great. Perfect.
That's pretty quick. As far as the, the dollar amount, I, I don't see why we couldn't make, make it a fluctuating dollar amount. In terms of the time of year, I, I like the idea of something quarterly. I think maybe the pitfall there is that you might have to look at the same application. You know, they might have, feel like they have to apply in different quarters if they don't get what they, but, you know, it would start over the following year, so I don't think there's a timetable that they have to complete it by. So if they wanted to come for approval when they were ready, when they had their documents together, they would have a year or so to.
Even six months. I think, I think it's more that if you get a business that comes in and, and someone's going to do some, some serious work, and all the money is just drained out by, you know, because it's new, people didn't know about it. So once they catch on to this, they're going to be applying early, my anticipation is. And if $15,000 hit, it's gone after like just a few applications.
Well, Kyle's nodding his head back there, so I'm sure our next meeting that isn't scheduled yet will probably start tackling some of those.
Yeah, I just want to be careful that, you know, we don't end up paying for.
Maintenance.
Maintenance from landlords and, you know, painting your building or replacing your windows. Those are things that are expected, that a landlord is expected to take care of with his own money. But I think it's a good idea that maybe we could drop the, the thing and get the price down a little bit, and maybe that would encourage somebody to paint the buildings or upgrade some of the soffits or, you know, put new doors on or something like that.
Or encourage owner occupation versus.
Right.
Yeah. But I just, I just, I'm just a little leery of picking up with the taxpayers' money, something that would be taken care of or should be taken care of by the landowner.
And this is a pilot year, right? This is our pilot year. We should test a few different things to see what gets traction. So I, I think as long as we call it that, we're, we're working our way through here, and then we can see at the end.
Right. And, and every one of these gets looked at by the, a committee. And so the only reason I would suggest that you can use it on some of those things, that in the Historic District, if you require someone to, to keep wood windows and you won't allow anything else, then those wood windows are a burden more, more of a burden for the Historic District. So I think it's just one of those things that you take a look at and decide whether or not the intent is being met.
Yeah, no, and I think, you know, that's what the staff is doing, and Kyle's team can be doing, is saying, hey, you know, this is, this is a basic maintenance thing that you should be taking care of, or this is a visual upgrade that's going to upgrade the entire downtown look, and so this really should be looked at by the committee. And I think the staff can help us sort their way through some of that.
Now, there was a long discussion when we put this program together about that, that it is not a maintenance program.
That's right.
Probably why the threshold was set higher. The original vision was more the facade.
Yeah.
Sounds like there may be some other uses, but at some point, you know, we're, we're really working hard on trying to figure out CIP, and where's this coming from, and where's that maintenance coming from? And we've got all these subsidies going on. We're subsidizing trash pickup, we're subsidizing this facade program, we're subsidizing, you know, the sidewalk program, and I can go on and on.
Waters.
Maybe we get rid of all those things and, you know, carry on with CIP. But that's just me.
Well, and, and in the, in the case of both these applicants, they were really putting a lot, a lot of extra money into upgrades on their own. This was just a small portion of getting them to the right spot, but I think it's going to make the, even though this is on the ground plane, and some of it's visual on porches or something, it's going to really upgrade the overall aesthetic of the downtown. Thank you.
Okay, P&amp;Z, Jane?
Did we vote on this?
Oh. Yeah, we did vote. We voted.
Okay. P&amp;Z, on August 16th, we had a training session with P&amp;Z and, and planning, which was very informational. ARB was there. We had an opportunity to talk about a lot of things, and, and, and I, I absolutely think it's wonderful to have these educational sessions, because it just opens up so many questions that we don't get a chance to ask. And we got a lot of great answers, and I, I really thank you, Jennifer, and, and your team for helping with that and the consultant that came. Very informational. August 23rd, we had a P&amp;Z meeting, and we talked about the Bridge Street Code amendments, about the application process being shortened. There was a lot of discussion about that, but one of the things that came up most was P&amp;Z had asked for the ability for an applicant to come with a concept plan that was non-binding. It was suggested by staff that there would be an informal review, that P&amp;Z would have the ability to hold an informal review that was non-binding before the application came in, and the concept plan would happen. Afterwards, it would be binding. So there was a lot of discussion about that, but I think that good things are going to come out of that, and they'll be bringing forward some good things for you to take a look at. I think you'll be happy with. P&amp;Z did request that there would be clarification of fulfillment of principles. As we talk tonight about principles and how we need to, how P&amp;Z needs to look at a plan and see if it meets a criteria, we have to make sure that the criteria is strong enough that we understand what we're trying to meet. So they, they asked for some clarification on that. We talked about an update to the Bridge Street network map, which removed Rock Crest from, they okayed that, removed Rock Crest from the map, and also the thoroughfare map was discussed, and that'll be coming to you. So that's all I have for that.
Thank you, Jane. Admin, Chris?
Homer's here. He, I forwarded all of the documents that we approved, our meeting minutes, pay adjustments, so on and so forth, are all official and will be taken effect on the appropriate date. So thank you for your feedback. Our, we'll have some more administrative things to do here shortly, but for now, we're, that's a wrap.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development, anything to add, John?
No, I think we've got it all covered. I think the flag discussion will probably come up in the next meeting or the following meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Finance Committee, Mike?
Anne, you heard from Dana. We have the meeting on the 29th tomorrow, is that tomorrow? Day after tomorrow.
Public Services, Christine is not here. John or Jane, anything to?
No.
No? Coda, Kathy?
Yes, so I had the pleasure to attend my first annual meeting, and it was a record 700 folks were at the Coda Annual Luncheon. And there was some really great news. People know we have the number one zoo in the United States, and we have the number one library system here in Columbus. And the Coda folks were awarded the number one Coda system by the American Public Transit Association. So that was a lot of fun, and I have my number one little Coda finger that moves around. I didn't bring it.
And Kathy's only been to one meeting, and I already got the number one.
And they already gave her the finger.
I'm telling you, it was just, it was just absolutely amazing. Yeah. So I congratulate the, the hard work and the innovation there. I'm trying to be serious here, Chris. So anyway, it was a great luncheon, so. She was there, too, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
Our next meeting will be on September the 6th, so I will have more to report following that.
Friendship Association, John, you have anything to add or to offer?
No, we're just not that friendly.
Okay. Morpsy, Chris?
We, that meeting is also on September the 6th, so we'll, I'll just meet all day and have all kinds of things to report.
Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing to report, thank you.
How about the U.S. 33 Innovation Corps, or Kathy, or Jane?
Nope.
John, Arts Council?
You heard it. October the 14th, be there for the Bread Festival and as the Columbus Dispatch.
And as the Columbus Dispatch said, this is currently a great art show, three great galleries under one roof, and it really is one of our best shows. So, if you get a chance, you need a little art infusion, stop by Riverside Drive and take a look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina is not here. She did not report anything. Washington Township, I don't have anything to report. Dana, I guess we'll be getting together with those guys in the near future, start talking about finances and things like that. Okay, before we turn to council roundtable, we're going to deviate from our normal routine here because there is an item of business that we cannot let pass without mentioning. I have a memo dated, I've seen the original, but I don't have the original on my computer here. It is, it looks like parchment paper and it's all dog-eared and it just looks terrible because it reads as follows. It's from former Personnel Director Dave Harding, who many of us know. And it was to our former Finance Director Nanette Prushing. And it reads as follows, and this is it in its entirety. Mr. Dana L. McDaniel has been appointed to the position of Administrative Assistant with the City of Dublin. Mr. McDaniel's appointment will be effective Tuesday, August sixteenth, nineteen eighty-eight. And his starting annual salary... Your wife is here, Lisa, Lisa's here, Dana. Your starting salary will be twenty-one thousand dollars a year.
It was going to be less, but I argued for more.
You had no idea you were hooking your wagon in that gravy train, did you, Lisa?
I just thought he had a job for a wedding.
Oh, I understand. You know, and I think we would all agree that it was one of the best hires that the city ever made. Dana has risen up through the ranks and he has bubbled to the top of the cream of the crop in every position where he has stopped along the way, from Director of Service to Deputy City Manager to Director of Development and now to our City Manager. And at each of those stages, Dana always received significant accolades and achievements and praise and awards, including starting as the first city, the city's first Service Director, established the City Service Department that was one of only nine in North America to be accredited by the American Public Works Association. And he was just getting started. We all know what he was involved with in the ground floor of Dublin and what he did and what that did for us, not only back then, but what it does for us now and what it's going to be doing for us for the next generation. And it isn't just the city, it has now reached out into the schools and it is really fundamentally changing people's lives, Dana. And that is, that is only when you were on your second stop. Under your leadership, the city was named twice as one of the top seven smart cities in the world by New York-based Intelligence Community Forum. And more recently, this was just last weekend, he was named the Leader of the Year by the Asian American Commerce Group and just recently is one of Central Ohio's most admired executives by Columbus Business First. Last year, he retired in his spare time as a Brigadier General with the Ohio Army National Guard after thirty-five years of dedicated service to our country. Happy thirtieth anniversary, General McDaniel. I can truly say for me personally, you know, I happened to have the privilege of sitting on this council when you took the position as City Manager. When I first met you back in nineteen ninety-six, on my first go-around on council, I think you were Service Director then, were you? And the things that you have done for this community at every stage of your stops along the way will be felt for generations to come. And what you have done for this community, you make this community a place where our kids want to come back. After they go away to college, they come back here to raise their families. And from that historic core, everybody drives through and gets a special feeling knowing that this is my hometown. And that is due in very, very large measure to what you have done for this community. And I know that you have, I drive by here on the weekends and I see your car here on Sunday morning. I see your car here on Saturday night. I know that you're here, I know that all the evening meetings, all, you know, we see on our calendars that the coffees with the City Manager and the talks in the park. And I know your relationship with Dr. Hoadley and what you do for the schools and what you do for our business community and the network that you have of the people that have an enormous amount of respect for you in our corporate community. And it is astounding what you have been able to do for this community and it is very appropriate on this occasion of being here for thirty years that we take a minute and thank you for that. Now, we're also going to go out of order because now we're going to go in order of the people at least up here that have known you the longest. And I think that would start with you, right, John?
Yeah, I have had a long and privileged relationship with Dana and, you know, Tim Hensley had this thing about hiring A-personalities and cutting them loose and letting them do great things. And with that, I think, and Dana was part of that team and they just ran with this government and took some risks that a lot of people say that government doesn't, and not our government, but a lot of people say government doesn't want to take risks, do exciting things, be on the cutting edge. But it's always been part of our history to be that government. And because Dana and his leadership and Dublin, which was just crazy, I remember, I think the first vote was a million dollars that you asked for. And, you know, how progressive was that? And, you know, here's all this stress about whether this thing's going to be usurped by a new kind of technology. And a lot of people wouldn't have said, hey, let's go do this because, you know, there's going to be radio waves and other things. Dana jumped out there, led the city, took it on, is an amazing feat of courage and high risk and allegiance to the city and faithfulness to our future that you did that. And, you know, as we progressed on, I think we did a lot of sort of rather risky things. I think, you know, the whole Bridge Street corridor, coming out of the recession, only having one person that wanted to actually risk that with us as we tried to get other people involved. But yet, you know, and knowing all the subtleties of it, as many of you might, and going ahead and doing that and in the trips down south to see new ideas, there was Dana right there backing all this stuff with Terry and Marcia in developing a city that was so totally unique and different. And then, you know, the intrinsic laws that make Dublin great, because, you know, I've gone in talks before on why Dublin is different from other cities and a lot of it had to do with our legislation and to, which caused a lot of conflict with people that didn't really want to amend to our system and said, hey, you know, you guys are way hanging out there with the kind of extreme things you asked for and the quality of life that we were pushing for. And all that took a ton of courage from the staff because I'm sure Dana and other people sitting in those chairs were hearing it from applicants saying, hey, you know, you guys are crazy, you're the only people doing this, you're the only people requesting this kind of thing and zoning. And it took a lot of guts to stand up and push back against sort of the common will. And I think that's what formulated our city into something really great. And, you know, so, you know, we could talk about Dana for hours and all the minutia of every one of his accomplishments, but I really want to thank Lisa because she put up with all this and the two daughters. And I think when we asked Dana if he wanted to be City Manager, sitting in a Tim Hortons, I think, and he said, I think I got to go home and talk to my wife, I'll let you know on Monday. And of course, she gave permission and I think, you know, the approach was, hey, you know, it's something you always wanted to do. But he already had his bucket full and had already accomplished so much and was a general and everything. And yet, the family had gathered around the City of Dublin and decided, hey, this is what we want to do for the common good and for all the people we worked with all those years. So, thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Dana. I mean, and just thank you for all the service.
Thank you, John. That's very kind. Michael?
Are you saying I'm old?
I didn't say that out loud.
Uh-huh. Gosh, you know, Dana and I go back, I was the township trustee when we met nineteen, I was first appointed in eighty-three and when Dana came on board in eighty-eight, I'd been five years working with the township. We had a very good relationship with the city, which is very unusual for townships and cities to get along. They simply do not. They generally just fight one against the other. And with Dana's leadership and Tim Hansley and the staff, you'll remember, we did a lot of joint things together. We bought the first fifty acres of Dari Fields, we did the firehouse. Everybody thought it was kind of a crazy idea, but we leased the firehouse at Waterworld. You remember that? And you're going to do what? You're going to put a firehouse on a water tower? Are you crazy? But it took two owners' uses out of play. Nobody wanted a water tower particularly and nobody wanted a fire station. They all want the service, they all want the water. But, so basically saved the cost of probably two or three million dollars worth of ground to build that out with their leadership and made that happen over there. So, that had worked out really well. Parks, firehouse, we did joint dispatching. You might have been, you were Service Director at the time?
I was involved as Management Assistant when we first started building the first dispatch center. It was at the, over at Meditech at the time.
Yeah, we'd done our dispatching.
Which was our temporary police station.
We all had separate dispatching at the time.
We moved the PD out of this building in nineteen eighty-nine.
Didn't make a lot of sense to do, to have, to duplicate that service. And the fact is, when one runs, police run, the fire runs and so probably have one of the finest dispatching facilities in the region, if not the country, as evidenced by now Arlington, Hilliard, Brown Township, Norwich Township. And I don't know if more are coming on, but it shows you the vision and how things can work out. So, basically, all these things saved the constituency money, saved our common constituency, our common taxpayers' money. And that's one of the things we're supposed to do as public service servants. And, you know, I guess Larry Eberhard always told me, our primary thing is to serve the health, safety and welfare of the residents and you've always exemplified that. So, I do remember you came in and asked us for a million dollars. I said, for what? For fiber? Or what was it called then? I don't know if it was fiber, but...
It was, that's what we, yeah.
I said, what? What's fiber? What's it going to do? A million bucks? Anyway, there's a leap of faith and as John had so eloquently stated, there's been a lot of really at-risk things that this city has done that most cities don't. You know, we talked today about the Bridge Park and the festivals and the farmer's market and all the neat things that are going on. None of that ever happens without the vision and the build-out of Bridge Park and the wonderful park that's going to be there and the pedestrian bridge was a real leap. I mean, that's, you want twenty-two million dollars, really? But we got it done. Actually, you guys tried to push that back a little bit, but in any of that...
But you never bring that up.
No, no. We appreciate everything you've done, I won't go on, but thank you for your service. I know it's been a labor of love. And I know, Lisa, I know my family as well as how much time it takes away from. We've told him not to spend so much time at the office on the weekend, am I right?
Ah, you are right.
Yep, so, but, thank you.
She does too, by the way. But thank you, Mike, I appreciate it a lot.
Thanks for sharing that.
That's very nice, thank you. Chris?
I think my dad was on city council when you first came to the city, so our history goes back a ways and have always appreciated the things that you've done. Last Saturday night, I got to join Dana and his lovely bride at the Asian American Commerce Group Ohio Asian Awards. I think Dana was the only non-Asian to receive an award that evening. But, you know, it was demonstrative of how Dana is perceived by his peers in the community. He got the Government Leader of the Year Award and I think there's probably a lot of groups that would like to give Dana a Government Leader of the Year Award. And this was one that just represented the state of Ohio, but he and his lovely bride, Lisa, there you can see their image and beautiful, I won't call it, the award that was delivered was really lovely. But I think that just personifies and exemplifies the things that Dana, you know, it's not just us that knows the good things that he does, it's well noticed around Ohio. So, thank you for representing us so well. To give you an idea of the kinds of awards they were giving out, I think their medical award was given to a guy who was developing, he was generating fetal heart tissue and artery tissue to do in vitro repairs of the heart on a fetus. And then there was Dana.
Yeah. I think I looked at you and I said, what?
I couldn't even understand what it was.
Well, that's true.
Well, the two of us were struggling to even understand what this other guy was doing, but what that does illustrate is the importance and the significance of the level of the contribution that Dana makes each and every day and it doesn't go unnoticed. And when you can rise to that kind of category, I'm trying to be serious here. It was really, it was a neat night. It was a tremendous honor to even be able to accompany you to that event. And it is, it really is one small example, or one large example, of the way he's viewed by his peers and how blessed we are to have his leadership.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Chris, that's very kind. Jane?
Well, you know, I've just gotten to know you so much better, but your name has been around for years and years because, you know, I have someone here that's worked as long as you have. And I asked him for stories today, but he won't give me one. But what I think I have come to really understand and I think I truly appreciate because of that, is that you have come through from the beginning here in Dublin and watched it change. It's one thing to have a City Manager that cares about your city. It's another thing to have a City Manager that lives and loves and knows the city from the very beginning. You've seen such changes. When I went to look back to see what was in nineteen eighty-eight, I'm not even sure Waterford Village was even there. I mean, I looked and, you know, my house is sitting in farmland. Things have changed so much. And you've come up from within this development of our town that turned into a city. And not only have you come up and grown into this position, which makes you the most qualified, the most experienced, the person with the most passion, that you can't hire that. That comes because you love this place, you know, and it shows. And not only do you have that passion about you, you have that passion to bring all of our staff up like that. You drive it by leadership classes, you find ways to make what they do better and you ask them to find the best that comes out of themselves. And so, you've come from within, but you bring everybody else here that I think is here to grow to. And I think that is one of your greatest assets. So, you're not only that kind of City Manager, but you're the best citizen, you're my neighbor, you're the person who knows everybody in town. Somebody says such-and-such is doing this, he knows him, the family and the grandparents. I mean, you know them all. So, we are so blessed to have someone who is really embodiment of the heart and soul of what a City Manager you would wish to have. So, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Jane. Thanks. Thank you. Kathy?
I first got to know Dana and Lisa because Lisa coached our daughter in soccer when she was, was she five, six, four?
Yeah.
Very young.
About that, yeah.
So, in addition to all of these other things, they're out there coaching the kids and being examples and that is amazing if you think about that. So, not only all the civic stuff, but from a personal, so my daughter became a very good soccer player, so thank you, early learning. And, you know, Dana, I was trying to figure out, there had to be something interesting that has motivated you to do all of these terrific things that we heard tonight. So, I did a little digging too about, is there any magic, oh, he's, look at those eyebrows went up, yeah. Are there any, is there any magic about the year nineteen eighty-eight? So, I went back and did a little, did a little researching. So, in nineteen eighty-eight, for those of you that don't remember, there were two Olympics that year. There was the Calgary Olympics and Seoul was that year. And I think you thought, well, if they can have Olympics in two years, we can have two huge festivals every year, right? So, you can have a Muirfield and you can have an Irish festival every year. So, we can do that. So, I thought, okay, that's kind of interesting. And this whole Dublin thing, you know, where that came from. Nineteen eighty-eight was the first time the phrase World Wide Web was used. And I happen to have had the honor to meet the guy, Tim Berners-Lee, who actually advanced all of that. So, we don't, you know, the World Wide Web, we need the dynamic Dublin link, right? So, this is making some sense to me. And then, finally, nineteen eighty-eight was a leap year. So, it had to be that the type of leader that you are is you're not going to be happy with just doing the status quo or doing two big things that you have to leap forward and...
things, that you have to leap forward in everything you've done. And I, I think about that, I'm amazed every day being a newbie, while we do that, and we do that, and we did that, and we're doing that, and we did this. And that doesn't just happen. It's just, it, it is because of good leadership. And so, we're privileged to get to work with you, all of us, and I'm privileged to, to get to know you and serve with you. And I thank you very much, and you, Lisa, for all that you've done for the city, for the kids, for the community, and for the council. So, thank you.
So, now, I'm going to ask you, you're going to have to stand up. And you're going to meet me down here. And Lisa, if you could come up here as well, please.
Oh, no, wait a minute. You've got to get a picture.
I won't make a speech, because everybody streaming in are like, oh, my God, get this over. No, I, oh, they are. Hi, Caitlin, Colleen. Thanks to my family for all that support for all these years, for sure. I mean, we've all, we all do it, right? We all sacrifice. And so, thank you, honey, for that. You know, when I started here, this building was it. We had two facilities. This building housed everybody. And we had one operation over on Post Road. And every time I walk in this building, I'm like, oh, my God, I can't believe that's, that's all that we had to support this, this whole operation. But to see the growth over the years, I get the chance to talk to a lot of graduate students and undergraduate students. Lisa and I do a lot of work with, with the schools that, that we went through for public administration. And the one thing I always tell them is, don't model yourself after my career. And I think Michelle, who just celebrated 25 years as well, could tell you the same thing, because she took my position after I got promoted. But I think we both tell people that you can't model your career after ours, because a lot of it's luck, and a lot of it's being at the right place at the right time. But to come to a city that was growing like we were and changing, and then to have all the different positions that you got the opportunity to have because the city was growing so rapidly and changing so dynamically, you can't model your career after that. I mean, very rare is it that you get that in, in our field. So, how blessed am I? How lucky am I? A lot to have had that opportunity, to have great teachers, coaches, mentors, and the city managers that we've had, with Tim and Jane and Terry and Marcia, to have the opportunity to work for. And this, this great team, there's, this is second to none you're looking at out here. And I try to remind them of that every day, that this, this has always been a great team to work with. And, and you got the best, I think, beside me. You got the best sitting out here, getting this done every day. And what a great community to have raised our children. And I never thought in this career, we never thought, and Lisa's had her own career, as you all know, in state government, but for us to be able to do really three careers and to stay in the same community is just unheard of. So, that's, that's how lucky I've been. And thanks to you all, we've had just the great fortune of the wonderful council members that we've had, time in and time out, and, you know, all the support that you all give us so that we can do the things that we do, those things you talked about, you know, some of them are crazy ideas. We still have them all the time, but, but it's the support you give us to let us to do that, let us do that is what makes a difference. So, thanks so much. Thanks for letting me be here. It's just, it's a fabulous place to work, and it's been a, a great career. So, thank you for that.
Probably a good place to end, but we'll go around the horn real quick on our normal roundtable and see if anybody else has anything to add. Jane?
All right, real quick, the only thing, Dublin Bridges has a new website, really easy to get to, get into and to give a little bit of yourself to the community. And three upcoming events in the Historic District. In September, the Historic Dublin Wedding Walk is, I don't have the date on here, but I think it's coming up, it's, soon knows, probably. But on October 27th is the Chili Cookoff, and November 10th is the Historic Dublin Business Association Wine Trail.
Thank you, Jane. Kathy?
I will only add one thing. I had the privilege to go to convocation with a few of, of you, and that was amazing. We have a great city. We have fantastic schools. And to see the faculty so excited and so engaged and so ready to educate our kids, it was very heartwarping. So, I congratulate them and wish them a fantastic year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. John?
Megan, Kathy, and I had the good fortune to climb to the top of the tower. And an amazing, just an amazing creation. That thing is going to be beyond awesome. But what I learned from the engineers that Megan introduced us to was that this thing is programmed to last 75 years. And the kind of cabling it has, if it's replaced, and it already has like the best embedded cabling you could have. But the, one of the engineers said, we could replace the cabling in 75 years, and this thing could last another 75 years. So, we're looking at a 150-year bridge with a lot of luck. And what...
And Dana will still be City Manager.
That's right.
John, you'll be 140 years old.
It's like a piece of gum you can't shake off.
So, a lot of really interesting information coming from the engineering team there. And what a great team. So, congratulations to the city for that risky endeavor and for Megan leading that. Really a complicated project. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Michael?
Just one quick item. I've had a couple phone calls and inquiries and that email that we all received about wanting to know what the noise was at 6:30 in the morning. If somebody could just send me an email tomorrow, and I will get back to those people individually. And perhaps this person's being answered by staff per our protocol, so.
Okay, we'll get on it. Chris?
I don't have anything further other than to congratulate Dr. Hoadley on a great convocation and just a really neat event.
Yep. Okay, we're adjourned.